We're the only ones fighting for the truth of what happened to John O'Keefe. And me and my family and my attorneys and my team have marshaled every resource to get to the truth. It just feels like no one else wants it.
And Karen, just to be clear, you didn't do it.
We know who did it, Steve. We know. And we know who spearheaded this cover up. You all know.
Yes, we do.
And no, she didn't do it. No, she didn't do it. This is an innocent woman. She didn't do it.
I tried to save his life. I tried to save his life at six in the morning. I was covered in his blood. I was the only one trying to save his life.
Why'd you admit to it?
He didn't, she didn't admit to it. She didn't admit to anything close to that. Nothing close to that. And you should know that.
Sounds like three or four times you said it.
No, she didn't.
That's not true.
She asked a question.
It makes absolutely no sense. That is the Commonwealth grasping at straws. If it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, it's a duck.
We have the eight letters. We've seen them. We've read them. We are using them. The genie cannot be put back in the bottle.
Yeah, LTL True Crime, we going deep in the dark.
Yeah.
Yeah, peeling back the layers, expose the hidden mark.
Oh, yeah.
From the streets to the alleys where the secrets lie. Getting into minds of the wicked, no alibi. LTL True Crime, unraveling the web of evil. No stone left unturned, we diving to the prime. Yeah, we digging up the dirt, bringing justice to the crime. LTL True Crime, unveiling dark realities every time. Yeah, LTL True Crime, we going deep in the dark.
Yeah.
Peeling back the layers, exposing the mark.
Oh, yeah.
From the streets to the alleys where the secrets lie. Getting things in mind, some wicked, no alibi. Never thought of it, thought of it, thought of it, thought of it. LTL True Crime, go. Make a good living in the show, but tell them not to come in here again soon. We could go back to the old one. You know, can't you wait till I? Good night, can't you wait till I? We thought of it, thought of it, thought of it, thought of it. Thought of it, thought of it. Yeah, LTL True Crime, revealing dark realities every time. This year. Yeah, LTL True Crime, revealing dark realities every time. Yeah, LTL True Crime, we going deep in the dark.
Yeah.
Peeling back the layers, expose the hidden mark.
Oh, yeah.
From the streets to the alleys where the secrets lie. Getting into minds of the wicked, no alibi. LTL True Crime, we going deep in the dark.
Yeah.
Peeling back the layers, expose the hidden mark.
Oh, yeah.
From the streets to the alleys where the secrets lie. Getting into minds of the wicked, no alibi.
Well, 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 what is going on? What is going on, everybody? Wow. Wow, 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 wow. So many interesting things, such an interesting day in the Karen Reed case. I'm still blown away. I'm still blown away at everything that we heard in court today. Jackson and Yunetti on fire, just completely on fire today. And I mean, just some of the things, I mean, you saw the reaction on Turtle Boy's stream. And I want to thank Turtle Boy for allowing me to come over there today and hang on the panel. I had a great time with him in the glare. I mean, you saw the reaction. I mean, it's just jaw dropping all day. It was unbelievable, unbelievable. And I'm still just trying to rattle everything around here in my head of what happened today. And just, you know, all this truth that came out. And it just, it goes on and says, it confirms that everything that Turtle Boy has been reporting on, everything that he has dug into and blogged about countless endless blogs. I think well over 300 blogs, maybe close to 400 on this case, has been true, has been true. And it's got to make him feel, I know he's extremely emotional. I mean, you could see it today. You could see it today, extremely emotional. But it's got to make him feel good inside, that all this hard work, all this sacrifice that he has done to put into this, sacrificing himself and putting it all on the line and being falsely accused by the Commonwealth to spend 60 days in jail for free speech. It's got to at least make him feel good inside, that all this hard work has been paying off and everything that he has said has been true. And it's such a great day. I mean, overall, we'll get to some of the key takeaways. I want to welcome everybody in. Thank you all so much for being in here. I do appreciate it. And we'll get the show rolling. So essentially, what I'm going to do here today is Turtle Boy is going to be on live with Howie Carr. We'll play through that and then we'll take this right into the Canton Select Board meeting. I do have a video that I'd love to play before that, though. Tim from Canton Community TV put a nice together, a little mantish, a nice video. I always call them mantishes, mantish, of the last time that I was out at the Morsi protest, the peaceful protest that we had at Morsi's office. And I want to play that video because I don't think Tim gets enough credit. And he does fabulous videos. He sent me the link to it. I'm going to play that here. And, you know, we'll check it out here. We're just waiting for TB to go live on Howie Carr. It's going to be a couple of minutes and then we can talk about some of the key takeaways from today. And if we have a little bit more time to kill in between getting ready for the Canton Select Board meeting, we'll just play back the Jackson testimony today and we'll go through that again. And I always love review, so that's great. All right, let's play this. This is from Tim from Canton Community TV. Tim, thank you so much for, I guess, really doing kind of a spot here with me. But the best thing about this is it shows the whole community. He did a really great job on this video. All right, let's play this here.
Three weeks after a February 6th protest outside the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office, protesters returned on February 29th, decrying what they described as a deliberately botched investigation into the murder of Canton resident and Boston police officer John O'Keefe, who was found dead on the front lawn of another Canton resident and Boston police officer Brian Albert on January 29th, 2022. John O'Keefe's girlfriend Karen Reed has been charged with his murder, but protesters here say that the prosecution of Karen Reed is part of a cover up involving the District Attorney's Office and its investigators. About 30 protesters gathered in front of the office of Norfolk County District Attorney Michael Morrisey on Shawmet Road in Canton, starting at 3:00 PM, with many of the protesters from three weeks ago returning.
We're back because we had such good feedback from last time and we're still legally in the same spot we were in last time. So we thought we'd come back and pay another visit to remind them why we're here.
And how's it going out here today?
Great. It is freezing and all these people came out and I really, really, really appreciate it because it's not, it's not comfortable. So it's going really well. Everyone seems in good spirits.
It's cold out here, but, you know, we got some people, we got some supporters showing up. I think the rollover from this past weekend of being out for Aiden and for Karen on Monday has really kind of spilled over. People are here and people are still trying to speak up and then, and make sure that everyone knows what we're here for. And that's for justice for everyone, Karen Reed, Aiden, the First Amendment. We're here to do, to make sure that the feds know and everybody else knows that something's wrong. And we're here to make things better if we can.
All right, I'm just going to camera round, everybody, so everybody can see what's going on.
Social media have put many eyes on this case and on to Canton.
The stream yard right now is malfunctioning. I got banners stuck everywhere right now. Okay, there we go. We got that down. Hopefully it didn't malfunction anymore. Let me just back this up. I missed a little bit of this. Here we go.
See what's going on.
Social media have put many eyes on this case and on to Canton. The organizers of this protest host a YouTube channel called Resistant to Silence, which runs programs and discussions about the Karen Reed case. And live streaming here today was another YouTube channel, LTL True Crime.
I'm out here today supporting the Free Karen Reed movement with all, with all these lovely people out here today. And this is now a worldwide case and people don't understand that. I mean, this is now reaching, I think there's a guy in Wales that actually streams about this. So this movement is huge and it's just to fight back against corruption and be out here and be with these fine people. Do you know how many people are watching your live stream now and what sort of comments do you get from them? Sure, I got about, almost about 400 people now currently on the live stream. They're all in support. A lot of people are saying Free Karen Reed. And they believe, you know, they believe that everything that is the Commonwealth is trying to do to Karen. And it's just, it's not right. It's not true. It's not right. It factually does not add up.
After a program is livestreamed on YouTube, it is often posted to that channel for anybody to watch at any time. Since this protest one week ago and those viewing on that day, the LTL True Crime livestream has had more than 8,000 views, according to the count on YouTube. The channel, which was mentioned as being in Wales, a country more than 3,000 miles away from Canton, is called The Alternate Corner and has been covering this case and another one in Canton, the Sandra Birchmore case. A discussion of the Karen Reed case with the channel's host Dylan and guest former Canton resident and retired DEA agent Sean McDonough has had more than 7,500 views since it streamed live two weeks ago. Protests in Canton used to be rare, but in the past year, they have become, if not ordinary, not uncommon. And with today's technology, they are seen by many more than those who go by on the day.
Still here, not going anywhere.
Norfolk County District Attorney's Office did not have a comment on this protest. For CCTV, I'm Tim O'Connor.
Tim was great. That was great. That was a great video. I hope Tim's watching. It was really nice work. That was really good. I don't think that, he was kind of in the background a lot, but I thought it was, it was great. Put that little spot together. Amy in Boston, member for three months. Thank you for the support. She says, today was epic. Hashtag Free Karen Reed. I can't agree with you more. I'm, my mouth, my jaw was dropped on the floor through that whole stream today. And like I said, I had such fun being up with TB. I think at one point, we had over 60, 6,200 people watching. I think that was either his closest to his biggest livestream or close to his biggest livestream. So that was, that was a real honor to be on that panel today with TB and Claire and got to kind of team up a little bit here. Okay, so let's, let's look at some of the key takeaways. I wrote down some key takeaways here from this afternoon. Again, I don't have everything to put together, but, you know, I wanted to take some of these. So key takeaways from today, here was the FBI that verified the Google search. Jen McCabe's Google search conducted at 2:27 AM with Lally offering no denial of the search. So there's been no denial of that search. On February 1st, 2022, Courtney Proctor texted her brother, Michael Proctor, about Julie, Colin Albert's mother, wanting to give him a thank you gift once everything settles. Michael suggests giving a gift for his wife, Elizabeth, instead. I just put as in there by accident. So during, during his testimony to the federal grand jury, Michael Proctor acknowledged having a relationship with the Alberts and conceded that he had minimized the extent of his relationship. He also informed his supervisor, Bukaki, of his connection of the Alberts prior to Colin Albert's interview. Contrary to the grand jury testimony, claiming they were asleep, phone records showed Brian Albert and Brian Higgins had a conversation at 2:22 AM. I want to let everybody sink that in. Let that sink in. 2:22 AM. And then what happened right at that? So five minutes later, Jen McCabe Googles on her phone. That was confirmed by the FBI. And we saw the tweets from Jennifer Coffindaffer today talking about her own organization, her own, her people. Her people that she rolls with, that she's been with, that has worked for. The FBI has confirmed that 2:27 happened and she still denies it because she goes on and says, uh, well, it's because the defense is saying it. Do you think that Jackson, Yunetti, or Little would stand up in front of an open court and lie about something the FBI said to confirm? Do you think that they would lie about that and risk their careers to be disbarred? It's virtually impossible. They would not do it under ethics. They would not do it. They would be in huge trouble if that was a lie. And you look at Lally, Lally didn't really say anything when they were saying this. He didn't say anything to deny any of this. He tried playing, he tried playing three card Monte today. He said that the defense was, but surely his game was three card Monte. And I can't believe that he got up and continued going on with his statements and his rebuttals, that they're going to push this all the way through? You're going to try to push this through to a trial? Do you know how embarrassing that's going to be for the Commonwealth? And I was like, it was funny. I was out to, what do we call it? Linner. I was out to Linner with my better half before the show and we were talking about it and I said, you know what, I almost feel, and I know I'm probably going to get shit for this, I almost feel bad for the poor bastard, Lally. I mean, he's the one, I mean, you look at the guy today, he clearly didn't want to be there. His body language is like, I just want this to be over. I don't want to be involved in this. You know, Morsi's pushing him, just pushing the button. You better or you're going to be out. I mean, this poor guy is going to be the fall guy in the end of it. I mean, totally going to be in there. I was talking about that on TV stream today, too. I mean, he's going to be the ultimate fall guy in all of this. But to go along with it and sit there and lie when you know all the evidence in front of you and it's clearly showing that the feds figured all of this out to be true as what we've known all along. So it goes on to say, contrary to the grand jury's testimony claiming that they were asleep, phone records show Brian Albert and Brian Higgins, I think I already said this, had a conversation at 2:22 AM on the night John was killed. Subsequently, Michael Morrisey authorized Brian Albert and Brian Higgins to destroy their phones. And then another key takeaway, the final point here that I have really quick is the, and there's many, many of them. The FBI's independent expert, the FBI's independent expert that has three PhDs in this area reconstructed the scene. Now let's think about that. Someone that's not even, not even connected to this case, the FBI goes out and gets a neutral person that has tons of experience in this area, crime scene reconstruction, accident reconstruction, whatever it may be, and asks them to come in and recreate this crime scene to find out if this was possible. Was it possible for Karen Reed and Karen Reed's SUV to strike John the way that the Commonwealth is saying that, that she did and kill him? The expert conclusively determined that the damage to Karen Reed's vehicle did not result from an impact with Officer John O'Keefe, thereby clearing Karen Reed and her vehicle from any involvement in John O'Keefe's death. So where would you be pointing that finger now? Where would you, in this audience, be pointing that finger now? 34 Fairview, something happened in that house. We know what happened in that house. We will find out what happened in that house. It's becoming very clear now, very, very clear. And don't worry, the trolls will go on and they will say, oh, it couldn't have happened. The defense is lying, you know, just like Coffindaffer, the defense is lying. Your own boys, the FBI, have confirmed this, have confirmed it. And I couldn't even believe that this didn't get dismissed today. But I have to say, I have to say, and I was talking about this at Linner as well. And I said, you know, I actually gave Bev a little bit of credit today. She had the memo. I think it was a 50-page memo. She's already read it. She's already read the 3,000-plus pages of the report. And she actually let Jackson and Yunetti talk today and I was kind of surprised by that. But she actually let them go. I think she has to. I think she has to now, knowing that the feds are involved. Knowing that, just like Yunetti said today, the active federal investigation is still active. Is still active. And I got to give Yunetti a lot of credit, too. Getting up there and calling Lally a liar on the record today. Getting that on the record, that Lally has been lying, has been lying. All right. So again, those were some of the key takeaways that I had, just a few of them. And there are many, many more, many, many more jaw dropping moments here. We have about, let's see, we have about five minutes till TB is supposed to join Howie Carr. We'll wait for that. I'm just going to look at the chat here and see what everybody is saying. She did still interrupt, but I have to say that she, she, I think, gave them a little bit more today. And I thought the back and forth was good. They did have their time. I love that Jackson went in thinking that he was going to have essentially all the time in the world today because Bev made that promise last time. But Jackson didn't get rattled. He readjusted right away. And I think he got the most important because he is just, he probably, I mean, they, oh, my voice cracked. Oh, he probably knew, he probably knew that she was going to cut down on time, but, you know, went and said, oh, you know, we weren't ready for this, but came out bombing anyway and dropped bombs, completely dropped bombs. And I like the fact that he readjusted on the fly. He didn't let him, didn't let it get him rattled and he just went for it and just dropped bombs today. Stuff that we haven't even heard yet, stuff that we've been waiting to hear in all of this. So I thought he crushed it. I have to say, Jackson absolutely crushed it. And then Yunetti at the end, cleaning it up, essentially laying down the law, wiping Lally, wiping the floor with Lally at the end was great, too. And, you know, essentially calling Lally a liar in open court and getting it on the record was amazing. So we have about another five minutes or so until TB joins Howie Carr. We'll, we'll play that segment and then also that should take us right into the Canton Community Select Board meeting because I planned on streaming that tonight. And if we have some time in between that, we'll replay the, the court hearing from this afternoon and listen to a little bit of that here. So let me pull up Howie Carr. I'll get that up on the screen. Appreciate everybody being in here with me today. Oh, by the way, I don't know if you saw on Facebook, I gave a studio update. I dropped a little bit of a video there today. I was there. I dropped off my rent check and met with my landlord again today. He's super excited to get me in the building. Of course, the spot is not completely finished yet. It will be ready on April 1st. He's rehabbing the whole building. It's going to be beautiful and I'm really excited to get in there. It's, it's awesome. It's like happening, you know? I was like, it's happening. I can't believe it. It's actually really going to happen to have an actual module working studio that I can go in and be super creative and really kind of start letting myself out a little bit more. You know, I have neighbors, so I got to be a little bit sensitive to them. But it's, it's definitely happening. So all good things there. I'm super, super excited about it and, you know, just getting it set up. And I said, you know, I'm going to promise myself, I'm not going to go live until I feel that it's really ready to go with the visual impact that I have. And I went in there today and I said, you know, I'm going to split this into two module studios where I'll have a single desk on one side for, for podcasts like this. Probably pretty similar to what Howie's doing, a little bit more jazzy. And then I'll have an area where I can have some guests in. It's nice. It has a nice built out common, common room that I can rent out. So not rent out, I'm sorry, just let my landlord know if I need to use that access space. It has a fridge, coffee maker, but I can have when my live guests come in, we can sit in that conference room for a little bit, kind of get to unwind before we actually go into the studio. It's going to be pretty badass. So I'm super, super excited for it. And, you know, I knew that this year I was going to go for it on YouTube and put, put it all in and put it all on the line. I had been wanting this for quite a while and I think that it's something that's needed to elevate the channel and get it onto the level that I want to go. And it's going to just keep going, you know? I'm going all or none. I'm really just throwing it on the table this time. It's all or none. And, you know, I have a year, a year on the lease and have to see how it goes. We'll have to see how it goes. All right, about another two minutes and thank you for all the congratulations. I appreciate it. Another about two minutes, Howie should be on with TB. He's probably doing commercials right now. We'll pull that up when TB gets on. And, you know, again, I thank you. I'm, I'm so happy that you're all here. You know, I look back at the channel where it was probably just under a year ago. I barely was clipping, you know, 2,000 subscribers and this channel is now built to almost 17,500 subscribers. It's unbelievable and it's going to keep going, you know? And I have a lot of things planned. The studio is going to be a huge inspiration for me and I can't wait. So thank you. Thank you for all the congratulations. So good stuff. All right, we'll, we'll see what's going on. Howie's probably got commercials. Yeah, we'll wait here. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, let's see what Howie's got saying here.
Been going on now for over two years and it's
Here we go.
Just a very convoluted, complicated story of increasingly looks like massive corruption at the prosecutorial level. And today there was more evidence of that. And there was a hearing. The trial is supposed to start next month, but, you know, who, who knows if it's going to start or not at this point or if it's going to be thrown out. But one of the people that's most intimately involved in this case is Aiden Kearney, aka Turtle Boy. He went to jail for, for 60 days for basically for reporting on this case with Karen Reed. And he's been reporting about how the FBI was involved in the case and the feds. And I, and I cautioned him, I said, don't expect the FBI to ride, ride to your rescue and Karen Reed's rescue on a white horse. I was wrong. I'm going to say that right now. I was wrong. They did ride, ride to the rescue today. Joining us now on the line is Aiden Turtle Boy Kearney. He just posted, he just posted his own account at tbdailynews.com, which is a very complete account, a very good, good way to read it. The, the papers still just can't seem to get their, get their arms around this story, Aiden. I don't think it's totally sinister. They just, they just don't understand the ins and outs of this, do they?
I mean, I don't get it. It's one of the most exciting stories I've ever covered. It's happening in our backyard. It's one of the biggest stories in the country. And the media just seems interested in regurgitating whatever the District Attorney's Office tells them. I mean, the story has so many twists and turns and you could find it all just by going on Facebook. You can read people's profiles, finding things on your own. It's basically what was done in this case.
I want to read you, I want to read you what, what Karen Reed's attorney, Alan Jackson, said today, which I think this is the biggest part of it, about, about the car. This is FBI hired experts investigating whether the car actually killed Police Officer John O'Keefe, who Karen Reed is accused of murdering, second degree murder. This is what he said from the reports that were turned over to the defense and the prosecution by the US Attorney's Office. The federal investigators hired, independent of us, we had no idea, and independent of the Commonwealth, hired a professional reconstructionist, three PhDs, to look into exactly this issue. Who struck, what struck John O'Keefe? Did Karen Reed's car, did her SUV make contact with John O'Keefe? And their conclusion to a person was his injuries were inconsistent with the damage on the car. The damage on the car was inconsistent with having made contact with John O'Keefe's body. In other words, the car didn't hit him and he wasn't hit by the car. Isn't that game, set, match or whatever they say, Aiden?
It, it should be. And if the car didn't hit him, Howie, then how did Michael Proctor find 35 pieces of tailway on five undocumented trips? The only logical conclusion is they planted evidence. And you're right, this should be game, set, match. There's only one person that gets to decide that. Because clearly the District Attorney's Office has no shame and no honor. They responded to these bombshells today by talking about how I went out to lunch with Alan Jackson in May. And that's, that's what they decided to deflect to instead of these bombs. They didn't address any of these, deny anything because why would they? They got caught. So there's only one person that can now step in and do something. Her name is Beverly Canoni.
The judge.
Up until this point, I've had, yeah, the judge, I've had very little faith in Auntie Beth. But today she did let Alan Jackson and David Yunetti talk for longer than she, than she initially planned. It seemed like she was a little bit better than them, a little bit better to them than she usually is. And if she has any honor, she will dismiss this immediately because this cannot continue. This is a farce. And if they prosecute this woman and she's acquitted, that just gives them the excuse not to go after the people that actually did this.
Well, you know, this is, again, the car is, is, is the bombshell development here today. But there, there are other problems. This, this, the state cop, one of the people that's assigned to the District Attorney's Office to investigate, his name is Proctor. And he told the state grand jury that he had no relations with the, the Alberts, where the, the house where John O'Keefe, you know, spent his last hours before somebody put him out on the lawn. But he did have, he did have a relationship, did he not? And he admitted it to the feds. He admitted it to the feds that he had told, he had falsely said he didn't have a relationship with the people he was, he should have been investigating.
Howie, I got indicted for the same thing. Howie, I got indicted for the same thing his boss, Brian Tully testified that, that Michael Proctor is the only person in the Proctor family who isn't friends with the Alberts. I guess they kept him chained in the basement when they did family visits. That's what they want us to believe. We all knew because Michael Proctor doesn't have social media. So he's not posting pictures of himself with them, but his mother is and his sister is and everyone else in his family is. And they want us to believe that he has no relationship with them. But now we know. Now we've seen the feds found text messages of Michael Proctor asking Julie Albert to babysit his kid 10 days before John O'Keefe.
Julie Albert lives in the, she's the, she's one of the women, one of the McAlberts as they, as you call them.
Yeah, she's one of the McAlberts. She's married to Chris Albert and her son Colin Albert was inside the house when John O'Keefe was there.
And then she's the owner of the dog.
No, she's not. That's, that's Brian.
Oh, I'm so, I'm sorry. I get these Alberts confused.
I know. They didn't suggest she was in town. But so basically um Julie Albert in another text message said that she wanted to buy Michael Proctor a gift because of how, as a thank you for his investigation on the case. An investigation that intentionally left her son, excluded her son Colin, who was there the entire time. He was never questioned. And she offered to buy him a gift and instead of saying, that's improper, I'm a Massachusetts State Police detective, he said, buy one for Elizabeth, his wife, instead. That's what he said.
He put that in writing. He put that in writing.
Put that in the text message, in the text message, they both did. And it just shows that the feds have all this stuff. This is information that Karen Reed's defense team couldn't get because of Rule 17 motions uh that were denied by Auntie Beth. And, and now, but now the feds have just grand power to just get whatever the heck they want.
And we, and, and you know, this, this was all introduced in open court. This is all public information. Now, did the District Attorney, uh, the Assistant District Attorney Lally, did he deny any of these uh allegations? These bombshells that the, the feds had turned over to the DA and to the, to the defense? Did he deny any of it?
Not once. Instead, he jumped on, he basically got up on there and talked about how bad Turtle Boy is. That, well, the defense is bad because Karen Reed called and Turtle Boy had phone conversations. We went on his phone. They had phone, oh no, not phone conversations between a journalist and the subject of the reporting. The attorneys talked to him on the phone too. Yeah. But it's like that, that's what they talked about instead of even addressing the elephant in the room that everybody's jaws were dropping over. That, oh, they also confirmed that 2:27 Google search, which we, that for How Long To Die In Cold that Jennifer McCabe made.
Yeah.
Which we all knew she made all along.
Right.
But we, that has now been confirmed by an FBI expert.
By a forensic uh IT specialist. Yeah.
Yep. And, and they, so they can't deny, like before they said, well, that's just the, that's the defense. They paid off some guy who doesn't know what he's talking about and that's not legitimate. Well, now an independent FBI expert has looked into it. They confirmed the same thing that we all knew that happened. That she searched that at 2:27 AM. Howie, you know, when I was in, when I was in the can, I uh, I was there with Brian Walsh.
Right. The guy who, um, yeah, move, yeah, who, who murdered and chopped up his, allegedly chopped up his wife and they've never found the body parts, but go ahead. Yeah.
Right. And Michael Proctor's the lead investigator in that case too. And what got Brian Walsh in there?
Google searches.
Right? So I slipped a note under his door and I said, hey, I'm a journalist, so I wanna ask you some questions if you're open for it. I said, are you aware that the same detective in your case who used all these Google searches to put you in here also is now denying the existence of Google searches in this other case in order to protect a government database? His lawyer wouldn't let me talk to him, but it's interesting. It's interest, I've never heard of police before saying Google searches, oh, that's not real. Except in this case, wanna protect powerful people. But now we know that the FBI, independent of all of this, has determined that that did in fact happen, that he was never hit by a car, that, that the Alberts and the Proctors were good friends for a long time, that they knew each other.
But, but yet the DA.
The DA just acted like this never happened.
Turtle Boy, isn't the DA saying that they have reports from the so-called State Police Lab sh- saying that uh, that O'Keefe's uh DNA is on the uh, these, these parts of the uh taillight from the Karen Reed's SUV? How is that possible then?
Sure. I, I mean, he lived there, didn't he?
Yeah.
What? How, how was it?
Like they, they lived in the same house. I don't know. It's a cow. I don't trust any of these. Did you know they also found microscopic taillight on his clothing? Well, now we know he was never hit by a car. So how did microscopic taillight get on his clothes? That's not just planting evidence. That's like smashing it to smithereens and putting it in his clothing. That's diabolical. So these people are capable of anything. I don't believe a word they say about anything at this point.
You know, I just thought of something else that eh, eh, you know, if, if this case comes down the way it's, it seems to have come, be coming down in court today, what about all of other, Proctor's other investigations and all the other state police detectives who worked on cases? They're gonna, they're gonna be, their, their testimony is gonna be impeached on every case they're involved in.
That's a great point. How can any of these detectives ever take the stand in the case again? They've been caught lying so many times to the subject of an FBI investigation. And Howie, the same state police who uh, you know, Bukinik, who is uh, Proctor's boss, and Tully, who is Bukinik's boss. Those are the two that came to my house and put me in handcuffs. Those are the two that made up these charges against me, these bogus charges against me. Because I had the audacity to see an injustice. I saw this murder cover-up and I said, no, 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 we can't be quiet about this. We're going to peacefully protest this. And they called that witness intimidation. And they came to my house, raided my house, took my phones, took my computer, took ev- made it impossible for me to do my job, threw me in the can for 60 days. All of this to try to shut me up because I was getting too close to the truth. And now the truth's coming out. And I'll tell you right now, they, they've accused the co- they've accused Karen Reed's defense team of paying me before. Well, guess what? It's gonna be the Commonwealth who's gonna be paying me next. So they better get their checkbook ready cuz I'm never gonna forget what they did to me, ever.
But you know damn well, uh, Morrissey's not gonna quit. He makes 191,000 a year. That buys a lot of donuts and kralas and pizza.
Uh, yeah, I don't think he's even making that much in the can, you know? Uh, maybe he can get a job there making uh, you know, he can work in the kitchen or something like that. He'd probably like it. But I mean, these, these people are criminals for what they've done. I mean, they, 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 this is, we, our institutions betrayed us. And now we, we know that. They tried so hard to not only frame an innocent woman, but to, to make me into a criminal, right? For simply writing about it, for making nine innocent people, we call them the Canton Nine, who peacefully protested out of a pizza shop and were charged with, with felony witness intimidation? Are you kidding me? Where does this end? They basically silenced the entire public to protect these people who quite clearly, based on the evidence, committed a murder and then covered it up as a fact.
All right, uh Turtle Boy, you wanna stick around for a little while?
Sure.
Okay, great. Wanna take, take some calls? We'll take some. If you wanna talk to Turtle Boy, 844-500-4242. This is the biggest day yet in the trial, uh, or the uh, the, the case. Yeah, I don't know if it's even gonna go to trial. 844-500-4242. We'll be right back. I'm Howie Carr.
All right, let's go back to the replay of the hearing today. When Howie comes back, I'll pop back over there, but we'll, we'll listen a little bit of Jackson while we're waiting for um Howie to come back. Uh, cuz I wanna get back. I wanna, I wanna replay. This is so good today. So we'll, we'll just paddle through this a little bit and kill some time until um Howie comes back from his break. All right, here we go. Jackson.
And that's like jumping from the frying pan.
Let's see.
We're stunned by this.
If you need additional time, tell me.
Here we go. Thank you, Peter, for the membership. Thanks for becoming a member. Appreciate the support.
I am as well. And my, that mindfulness suggests that my comments will be directed to that which is necessary to further the proceedings.
Okay.
Which means that I'll start with the um.
Just if anybody, don't freak out. We'll go back to Howie. He's on a break right now, but I'll pop back out when, when he comes back up. I'll keep checking on it. Uh, when he goes back live, I will pull that back up. Just killing a little time here.
The basic rule of Odell, uh, we start with the postulate that
As loud as it goes.
That's where we start. Any distortion of the evidence during the course of a grand jury proceeding impairs the integrity of the indictment. If there is an indictment and pursue it to Odell, that requires dismissal. Um, in this particular case, there were myriad examples, which I will, again, I'll edit. I was gonna go through several, but I'll just touch on them very quickly.
Your memo, I have to say, your memo is very thorough and very helpful.
Good. Good.
Thank you.
Great. That's what we want.
The, what we believe is the failure to disclose Sergeant Michael Lang's personal lifelong relationship with some of the individuals, specifically the individual Chris Albert. There was a, a comment or a, an incident, I should say, that we referred to in our moving papers that dealt with Chris Albert and Sergeant Lang years ago. They have a longstanding, years-long relationship. And I'll, I'll, I'll close this loop in just a second, but if you'll allow me, that relationship goes all the way back to 2002 at least. And there was an incident in which Sergeant Lang and Chris Albert had gotten into what can easily be described as a bar fight. Chris Albert had gotten into a bar fight of some sort. Michael Lang walks out of the, the same bar or an adjacent bar. He'd been drinking with his buddy Chris. He walks out, stumbles out, announces to the, to the uh participants in this fight that he was quote-unquote deputizing himself and ultimately came to Chris Albert's aid. That was with the specific intent to assist an Albert in getting out of a legal jam all the way back to 2002. The reason I bring that up, and by the way, both of the individuals involved, not Sergeant Lang, both of the other
SaaS Candice. With a three-pack special, you can use one in your
per set off. Individuals involved were ultimately arrested by Sergeant Lang. That case went to trial and both of the individuals were found not guilty of assault. And that's after Michael Lang engaged in fisticuffs with at least one of the men to the degree that the Canton Police Officers had to pull him off of the individual.
So this is, this is in your memo and it also exhibits C through E.
That's right.
TB reported on that, by the way. All right, Howie Carr is back. We're gonna go back to Howie. Here we go.
I, I'm gonna try, I'll, let's just take some stuff to, to uh, before, before we go to the bottom.
Nope, he's not back. He's talking to his producer. Oh, Howie. All right, we'll just wait here. I don't know, go back and forth 9,000 times.
8/4965.
I tell you, operating a stream, think I'd be able to do it by now, right? All right, waiting for Howie to come back from break.
Right to the calls. What do you think is gonna happen at the meeting tonight though? Uh, the Canton Selectmen are meeting tonight, Aiden.
Oh, there'll be always be fireworks. I'm sure Rita Lombardi and crew will be down there, trying to hold them accountable. Uh, but they got an election coming up, Howie, in a couple of weeks. They're trying to unseat two of the uh members there that kinda go along with the status quo, so.
Yeah, Conley's won, right? Conley? Yeah.
Yeah, I got it. He's up for reelection next year. It's
Oh, next.
Tular and Lockren.
Okay, let's take some calls here quickly. Uh, Brian, you're next with Howie Carr and Turtle Boy. Go ahead, Brian.
Aiden, how are you, sir?
Sorry, I dropped Turtle Boy. I'll get him back.
Oh, we lost him. We just lost him, uh, Brian. We're gonna have to wait a second here to get him on. Ho- hold on. You know, so a texter just mentioned Annie Dukin. Remember Annie Dukin? She was the one who uh, the, the State Police, she was a, she worked for the Department of Public Health, but she ended a lot of the uh, State Police investigations. She was fabricating evidence. And then there was one in Western Mass. Sonia Farak was doing the same thing. Turtle Boy, aren't you getting uh Annie Dukin, Sonia Farak vibes out of all these uh, it, these uh amazing discoveries that the State Police Lab is making?
Yeah, anything these guys touched this question, that, that includes Proctor, Bukinik, uh, Tully, any of them. Cuz it's not just, it's not just Proctor. It's an institutional problem. Any other line of work. Like the good people, they, 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 they don't accept the bad people being corrupt. Like I was a teacher. If there was like some other teacher diddling kids, you best believe that the other teachers aren't gonna, you know, go along with that and support them. But in policing, it seems like, you know, you have some obviously corrupt cop and then the, his bosses just go along with it and they don't do a goddamn thing about it.
Yeah. Brian, go back. You're, you're with Turtle Boy again. Go ahead, Brian.
All right, how you doing, sir? Uh, real quick, I, I had a friend of mine, uh, the morning this happened, uh, worked at that hospital. And uh, they told me some information. I'm, I'm well-versed in the field. Uh, that right from the jump, uh, that person was a little suspicious as to what was going on. I couldn't wait. I tried to get some information. Um, and then once Turtle Boy got on the scene with his reporting, you know, I was looking forward to it. It was a matter of time until things broke the way they did. Uh, you do excellent reporting. Uh, congratulations to you and, and it's not over yet. Um, but if you look around the state, you know, you know, we've seen it in Fall River. Uh, Jase Correa and, and that crew and, and all that with policing. Um, it's unfortunately, our institutions, um, they're, they're cracked with individuals who shouldn't be in positions that they are in.
Hey, Turtle Boy, look, look at Rachel Rollins just got a job for, with uh, working with returning citizens. Are you a returning citizen?
Oh, she's still alive? No one's heard from her since then. How? She like, she doesn't go on Twitter. I'm glad she's alive. I was worried about her there for a minute, but uh, it's kinda funny out in this case that their, their defense, they tried to throw Rachel Rollins under the bus and say, oh, this is all Rachel Rollins doing. She doesn't like me cuz she called me a racist. Like she calls everyone a racist. Yeah, you're not, you're not special, Morrissey. And by the way, she's not leading the investigation either. Josh Levy is. So that one went off the door real quick.
Yeah, do, can you stick around for another, one more segment?
Sure.
Okay, that's great cuz we have full, we'll, full lines. People wanna talk. 844-500-4242, 844-500-4242. This is a, it's, it's, it's a big, it's a big night. Where can people go to donate money to your defense fund, uh, Turtle Boy, before you become a millionaire at the, at the expense of the Commonwealth?
You can just search for Turtle Boy on GoSendGo. It's pinned to the top of my Twitter account, at DrTurtleBoy, D-O-C-T-O-R, Turtle Boy, cuz if Jill Biden is doctor, then so am I.
And uh, he's, he just put up his uh, his, his account of what happened today in court, tbdailynews.com and so it's a very complete account. We'll be back with Turtle Boy in just a moment. I'm Howie Carr.
All right, we'll go back to Jackson and we'll go back to Howie when he comes back. Thank you all for being here with me today. I appreciate it. We're just uh killing a little bit of time till uh, the Canton Community um Canton Select Board Meeting starts. All right, let's go back to Jackson. We'll listen a bit, a little, little bit, a little bit of this before uh Howie comes back.
And the reason this comes to a head and the, the conflict of interest comes to a head is because Michael Lang ultimately was the first person to walk into Brian Albert's house. During the course of the grand jury, nobody elicited information from Michael Lang that he had a close personal relationship with the Alberts, that he had in years past come to the Alberts' aid. And yet he was the first person that came into the house. Even the grand jurors were stunned by this. And asked, the specific grand jurors asked Michael Lang and asked the Commonwealth, or through the Commonwealth, a witness, why didn't Brian Albert ever even come out of the house? And I think we have the answer. And the answer is because the Albert, specifically Brian Albert, was waiting on a friendly. And they got that friendly through Michael Lang. That was withheld from the grand jury. Sergeant Lang is a longtime childhood friend of the Alberts. The Canton Police Department was conflicted off the case because of those personal and familiar relationships that the Alberts have with Canton Police Department. And Sergeant Lang has a history of using his position as a police officer to shield the Alberts from criminal liability. That was never brought out. That's the kind of distortion that Odell talks about. Another broad example or a broad category that I wanna discuss briefly deals with Trooper Michael Proctor. The Commonwealth held, withheld from the grand jury clear and even more egregious conflicts of interest as they pertain to Michael Proctor.
Real quick, I just wanna read this off. Uh, Michael, thank you so much for the 50 on Cash App. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And Michael went on to say, hang on one second. I wanna read his chat he had there. I'm just waiting for Howie to come back up. Michael went on to say, I should be better at this. So thanks for all the hard, he goes, thanks for all the hard work. Well, thank you, Michael. I appreciate the support. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Was aware of this irremediable conflict that Canton Police Department had and that he should have had with the Alberts. So what does he do? He calls in Massachusetts State Police. And who do they send but Michael Proctor? And that's like jumping from the frying pan into the fire. That's the same Michael Proctor who's also years-long, close family friends with the Alberts. The Proctors have called the Alberts their quote second family. And to that point, now we have benefit of some hindsight. And that's the federal investigation. We have been saying since September 16th, 2022, in lengthy motions that we filed
Suzanne, thank you so much for the 50. I appreciate that. She said, thank you for all that you do and you've done for Aiden and all of us. You've been invaluable. No, you all have been. And I said this earlier on Aiden's stream, and I, I don't want people to lose sight of what's gone on and what's going on. If this was not for Turtle Boy, If this was not for Turtle Boy, I would not be here today, you know, kind of helping and joining this movement and giving my perspective and my reporting on this. If it was not for him for cracking the case here, we wouldn't be here. And I don't want people to lose sight of that. Think Howie's coming back. Let me just bring him up so if he starts talking, I don't miss it. And it, and, and you all wouldn't be here. We appreciate all the support. I really do. I mean, it, it, it just blows me away of the community that's come together, the Free Karen Reed Movement, you know, people taking their days off from work to go down in support in front of the court, people trying to get into court, people taking days off like myself and whoever to do these streams. I mean, I took a day off from work today because this is important to me to stream this and I try to do as much as I can. But if it all wasn't for this community, we wouldn't be in this position at all. So it's all, all of you, you support us, you help us and we're very appreciative of that. I, I say it all the time to my friends, my family, everybody that I come in contact with, I can't believe it. You know, some nights here, I'm like over a thousand people in the chat. It's unbelievable. I would have never thought that, but we all have that common interest and we all have the common interest in this particular case. And we all know that what the Commonwealth is trying to do to Karen Reed is complete bullshit and this, and Karen Reed is factually innocent, everything. I mean, I don't know why and how the trolls can keep going on with this charade and how the Commonwealth can keep going on with this charade. I mean, we, the feds have confirmed, the feds confirmed a lot of information today and we heard a lot of new bombs dropped today that things that we didn't know about. And I can't wait until we can get our hands on that 50-page memo and, and read it from Jackson and see what other things are in there because it's, that was just the, the tip of the iceberg. There's, there's, there's a lot more. Let's see if Howie's come back.
Question is brought to you by Balance Seven. Stop procrastinating and get your energy back. New customers can save 20% and get.
I'm not sponsored by that, so I'm going to cut that sponsor out. Motion says the goat. Thank you, man. You've been here for a very long time and thank you for the five and the support. I appreciate it. We'll just wait for Howie to come back, but you know, going back to my, to my, my point, hang on, Howie might be back.
21% say inflation is.
Oh, um, you know, going back to my point, I mean, if it, oh, Howie, you're killing me.
Where can people see your own show, Turtle Boy?
They can just check out our YouTube channel, Turtle Boy Live. We go live at nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. I'm sure this is going to be a big record-setting night for you. It's, it's just amazing. Did, did, did Proctor lie to the, to the state grand jury? Do we know that? Or, or did he leave it to somebody else to say he didn't know the, the Alberts who he was investigating?
Uh, I'm not sure if, no, I, I'm not sure if he, if he was asked that by the state grand jury or, because the, the district attorney's office is the one that gets to control the question. So why would they even think to bring that up at a, at a state grand jury?
But I'm just looking at your story, you say Proctor confirmed to a, to the federal grand jury that he had indeed lied about his closeness with the Alberts.
That's correct. Yeah, I'm not sure where, who he lied to about that, but yeah, I guess it would have to be the state grand jury lies itself. Um, you know, because they confronted him with text messages, like they have all their phones. They clearly, and that's one thing we learned today, they have all their phones. DA Morrissey's office told Brian Albert, a Boston police officer, and Brian Higgins, an ATF agent, to destroy their phones. That's another thing we're overlooking.
Destroy their phones? I mean, usually they, usually even at a civil investigation, they say preserve the records. That's the first thing they say and that's a civil case. This is, this is a murder case.
Destroy, the DA's office is ordering people to do this. Get rid of evidence, get rid of your phones. It's just, this could be the biggest story in the country when it goes down, Howie. The question is, will, you know, it's, this investigation could go on for months or years. The question is, will Karen Reed go to trial in the meantime? I certainly hope not.
What's your, what's your thought, though? You think Judge Auntie Bev, as you call her, is going to throw it out?
Fifty fifty at this point. Before I thought she never would, but after today, I don't see how. It's going to be extremely hard.
Yeah, because the feds are involved.
What are the, what the, what, I mean, you can't quote them directly, but what are you, what's your feeling about what the lawyers think, Yannetti and Jackson?
I mean, based on their appearances today, they seem extremely happy, extremely confident, as they should be, because the facts are on their side and it's just only a matter of time until this goes down.
Seamus, you're next with Howie Carr and Turtle Boy. Go ahead, Seamus.
Turtle Boy, could you talk a little bit more about the 2:22 AM phone call when everyone was supposed to be sleeping? And is that contrary, in contrary to grand jury testimony?
That's correct, yeah. Both, uh, Brian Albert said that he was sleeping by 2:22 and I believe Brian Higgins did the same, yet there is a phone call between them at 2:22. That's another thing we learned today. And how would they know that there's a phone call between them? Then it means they have their phones.
Had their phones.
They've gone through their phone records. They have everything that Karen Reed's defense team couldn't get their hands on. They have all sorts of communications. They know everything. They, they know what happened and, uh, you know, they're not going to let, I think that they, by providing this evidence, they assumed that they're not going to allow this to go to trial, but ultimately, again, it's up to Auntie Bev.
Well, I mean theoretically, couldn't Morrissey, Morrissey pull the plug on it, the DA?
He's not going to.
Yeah, that's not going to happen. He could also like not go for, you know, third helping gravy.
I, I like the, the, his, his prosecutor said that the federal materials that were turned over were largely consistent with what they had. I mean, whatever, whatever happened to guilty beyond reasonable doubt, largely consistent means it's, the case is gone, doesn't it?
He said 90 to 90, he said 90 to 95%, which means that 5 to 10% of the investigation is completely wrong. And then what, what part was that, you know? The lying here, it's just bizarre how they're just going down with the ship. It's strange.
Sally, you're next with Howie Carr and Turtle Boy. Go ahead, Sally.
Aiden, love your show. I'm, I'm a big B N. I have a question. Has anybody come up with the missing sneaker and the belt or did they use that to drag the body out into the lawn?
Well, the, the sneaker that was, was not there at six o'clock when the Canton police got there. They found him with one.
This is O'Keefe's, this is O'Keefe, the dead cop, right?
That's correct. When the Canton police got there at six o'clock in the morning, his body was there, he only had one shoe on. The other shoe was MIA. Luckily, after a foot of snow fell, fell down and, and the state police did a second search, they found the shoe. Because shoes appear after snow starts falling, apparently in Canton. So, you know, I don't know where that shoe was before, but luckily they found it the second, I guess the Canton police are just blind and they didn't see a size 12 shoe or whatever that he wore. As for the belt, I'm not entirely sure. But my, my belief is that that Ford Edge was parked right there. I think that they, that they took his body out of the basement, they have like a little thing in the back, you know, going in the backyard. They went over to the fence, right out, if, if you park the Ford Edge where it was seen by Lucky Locker and it would perfectly block the line of vision and you could just drag his body right there and go back inside the house.
Lucky is the tow truck driver. They did an interview for what, a year, a year and a half? Tell people about the two-minute gap on the Canton Public Library Surveillance Camera. They, people were very interested in that. We talked about in the first hour.
Yeah, so when, when Karen Reed would have gone from 34 Fairview Road back to John O'Keefe's house, she would have gone through the center of town and the library's right there and the library has surveillance video. And so obviously if, if she had just hit him and her taillight was cracked or broken or shattered or whatever, then that surveillance camera would have her taillight, right?
Right.
Well, coincidentally, that, you know, the Canton Library video was working all night, except there's a two-minute gap that appears, 12:37 and 12:39, at the exact time Karen Reed would have gone through. And who handled that evidence? Who did, who, I, I went into Canton Town Hall and I interviewed the IT director. And who did he hand all of that video to? Michael Proctor. And then Michael Proctor put it onto a CD and two minutes were missing, the exact two minutes when Karen Reed drove by. Because if they want to get her, they could get her. Her taillight's broken at 12:37, she's guilty. But coincidentally, it's just gone, it's gone.
Yep. That's a tough break for the prosecution. They lost that smoking gun evidence.
Yeah, seriously, seriously. I mean, Howie, I went, I went and knocked on doors on that street, like a real reporter. I knocked on doors every time I saw a Ring camera and I asked the people who lived there, did the state police ever ask them by an ass for video? Because Karen Reed would come by on a midnight ride home and every one of them told me no. The state police never asked for any Ring video. They, everything they normally would have done in an investigation, they didn't do in this one.
It's, you're a, this is, this is, this is something, I never thought you'd, I, I thought you would prevail, but I didn't think you'd prevail in these, in this way. I mean, it's, this is turning into a rout, Turtle Boy. I guess they, anything could happen, but it's looking very good for you right now at Karen Reed.
They're trying to send me back on Thursday, Howie. They're trying to send me back to the can on Thursday, uh, for, for a violation of the order and.
Was that when you went into the courtroom and that woman was there in the courtroom?
Yeah, she showed up holding the order with, she came with the McAlberts. She's never been to one before. I was evicted. I left, I went to where a cop told me to go, across the street of the Registry of Youth and I stood there. I didn't see her again, but apparently they're alleging now, they're making up another lie that I yelled at her on the way out. And we can prove that it didn't happen, but these people just won't stop. They're vicious. They put innocent people in jail when you challenge them. And, uh, you know, it's scary. It's scary because they have a gun.
So, so they, you're going to, you're back in court on, on, on Thursday, yourself as a defendant.
Thursday, 9:00 AM, Dedham District. Yep, and as a defendant.
Good Lord. Rambo, you're next with Howie Carr and Turtle Boy. Go ahead, Rambo.
Hey, congratulations there, Turtle Boy. And hey, Howie. Yeah, it's a travesty of a mockery of a sham is what it is. And Turtle Boy, you, you got it right with the, with the hate notes, left alleged notes on this Westfield State student's door that time you cracked that case.
Oh, I remember that years ago. Oh, yeah. Well, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, all good.
Come a long way since then. Come a long way.
Thanks.
State crimes at Westfield State and murders in Norfolk County.
Thanks, Rambo. Kelly, you're next with Howie Carr and Turtle Boy. Go ahead, Kelly.
Hi, Howie. Hi, Aiden. Thanks for taking my call. Just real quick, first I'd like to thank Aiden for all he has really brought to this case. Aiden, you, I think, should be very proud of yourself for all you've done for Karen, her family. You've just, you've done an incredible job, so congratulations. And then I would like, I'd like to ask you the thoughts on the taillight. I thought it was really interesting, the commentary about the car did not, he was not hit by a car, right? In so many words. So taillight all over the scene, I mean, we're talking definitely planted, right? I mean.
I mean, right, you know, if they even found it there, like they were undocumented trips for all we know. Michael Proctor could have just entered it into evidence whenever he wanted it. You know, they kept finding it. Every time he went there, he'd find more taillight. He's the taillight whisperer. He missed it the last time. He kept finding more taillight. And again, that's, that's the really diabolical part about the taillight. Now that we know as a fact that he was not hit by a car, how did all that taillight get found? That shows that this was not just poor police work, but an intentional frame job. And who did that and who orchestrated it? And, and when did it happen? Did they even plant it there or did they just enter it into evidence? They don't even have to plant it. They could just enter it into evidence and say they found it there. It's undocumented.
Why, why, I've never understood, why did they want to frame Karen Reed for this?
Easy way out.
Well, she's the only, well, they're going to frame.
Yeah.
She's the only, she's the only one who's not a townie. Is that what you're saying, basically what it boils down to?
Yeah, they probably just didn't like her. Maybe she's a little bit too uppity. She's a, you know, an adjunct professor and works at Fidelity. I mean, these people are pretty common, some of these folks, and these Chris Alberts of the world, if you meet these guys, they, they don't like the Karen Reed types. They're, they're too confident and they're, and they're too educated. They don't like them. So, and I just think that like.
Meatheads.
Look at these pictures of the Albert family, like it's a huge family. They are not going to let their family get destroyed over someone like Karen Reed when she can just take the fall for them.
Good Lord. Marshall, you're next with Howie Carr and Turtle Boy. Go ahead, Marshall.
But Karen was smarter.
Howie?
Good. Karen was smarter and she fought this.
How you doing, Aiden?
And look what's happening now.
I'm good. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Quickly.
So I've been following this case with you, Aiden, from the beginning. I knew like, the day you reported on it, I knew it was going to be like one of the biggest cases in history. And, you know, you've just done an amazing job. I started watching your reporting because of how accurate you are on, on another situation. And your reporting, it's just, it's, it's very, it's, it's very good. And my question is this, you know, for all the Turtle Riders and Karen Reed supporters on Twitter, where we have all these minions for the prosecution, like Jennifer Coffin-Daffer and Grant Smith Ellis and Kevin from Yellow Cottage Tales.
All in names, though.
Yeah, you, you want to know how to fight them? Is that it, Marshall?
Well, are you like, because they keep putting out all this, you know, misinformation, all these lies. They keep blaming you and, and, and all the supporters. Are you going to end up suing them? I mean Coffin-Daffer I'm thinking about, she's like literally making things up about me that are just completely untrue, saying that I threatened her, that I sent.
She's a supposed, she's an FBI, ex FBI agent, right? Or is that?
Howie, she's posting things that I'm like a drug addict, that I'm.
And keep in mind that I sent her death threats to her. Her team, the FBI confirmed all of this information today in court.
Block function on Twitter, it's a cesspool on there. You know, that's the beauty of it. You get to decide who you listen to and who you don't. But, you know, just watch, it's just hilarious. They're idiots. 99% of the people who look at this feel the same way that we do. Twitter is not real life. It's just a bunch of minions, of fake accounts that are just spreading misinformation and they're going down with the ship and they're, they're going to look real dumb when these people get led away in handcuffs.
Turtle Boy, congratulations. This is a big victory for you. Good luck on Thursday and, and people can see you tonight on your, on your Rumble channel at, what is the, what is it, Turtle Boy?
Yep, Turtle Boy Live. You search for it on Rumble or on YouTube and we'll be on there at night.
And if you want to, if you want to read up on the case, there's a really good account of what happened today. Go to tbdailynews.com. And where do people go if they want to contribute money, Turtle Boy?
You just go to Turtle Boy, you just search for Turtle Boy on Give Send Go. It's pinned to the top of my Twitter account, @DrTurtleBoy.
Okay, great. Congratulations.[1597.11] Okay, great. Congratulations. And do you want to say anything to the Canton Board of Selectmen tonight?
Your guys are going down. Rita Lombardi and Tricia are about to, oh, yeah. And then we're gonna take over the other three seats.
All right. Thank you, Turtle Boy. Congratulations. I'm Howie Carr.
Good stuff. All right, we'll pop back into Jackson, and then we got about another 10 minutes. I gotta use the bathroom real quick. Uh, well, I'm gonna pull this up. We'll keep playing through this until the select board meeting starts, and then we'll we'll go. Listen, I appreciate everybody being here. Uh, close to about 800 people between Twitter and YouTube and Facebook, uh, on the platform tonight. Thank you so much for supporting LTL. Uh, this has been, uh, really great, you know, really, really great. And and again, this channel would not go without all of you. I appreciate all the donations that have come in. Um, and everybody, you know, wanted to be part of this community, the LTL community. And, uh, it's been such a great ride so far. And again, you know, we can't, we can't keep out of the equation. Uh, if it was not for Turtle Boy, we wouldn't all be here. Uh, I wouldn't be here in the mix with the Free Karen Reed movement. So I want to say thank you to him. And again, it was such an honor to be over there today, streaming almost 6,000 people watching, over 6,000 people watching his stream today. So really, really good stuff. Um, and and I do appreciate that. All right, I'm gonna play this. I gotta step off for a second, use the restroom, but we'll be back. Um, I'll be right back. And then we'll get to the Canton Select Board meeting in about 10 minutes. All right, here we go.
And filed with the Commonwealth. There is a conflict. You're not investigating the conflict. That conflict was never described to the grand jurors. And we've been rebuffed at every single turn. Newly uncovered text messages, but from the feds, revealed that on January 19th, 2022, think about that date. That's 10 days before the incident. January 19th, 2022, Michael Proctor texted his own family members discussing the specifics of having Julie Albert babysit for his toddler child. We should all let that sink in for a second.
So, yeah, I understand that.
There is a level of closeness that cannot be overstated. Michael Proctor is so connected to the Alberts that he was entrusting them or willing to entrust the Alberts to be caregivers for his toddler child. And it's not lost on anybody in this courtroom that for two years, the Commonwealth has been denying it and still denies it in their opposition paperwork. They still say, well, there's nothing to see here. It's Michael Proctor's sister who really is friends with Julie Albert, and that, you know, that's not a big deal. Everybody looked the other way. As a matter of fact, Ms. McLaughlin wrote the following in her opposition. Trooper Proctor's supposed close and personal relationship with the Alberts is, quote, entirely unfounded and a desperate creation of the defense, a desperate creation of ours, which she says we created this. But now we have the benefit of the federal investigation. And the Commonwealth finds itself in that very unenviable position of having to eat some very distasteful words. Because we didn't create anything. And there's more. On February 1st, 2022, three days after John O'Keefe was killed, there was another text message. And this one, Michael Proctor's sister texts Michael Proctor very specifically and writes the following, quote, "Just saw Julie." And Julie said, "When all this is over, she wants to give you, Michael Proctor, a thank you gift." Michael Proctor didn't respond with, "That's inappropriate. These are witnesses. These are potential suspects. Uh, please tell her, don't ever do that again. Don't ever suggest an exchange of gifts again. That would be inappropriate. I'm gonna go write a report. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Lally, and Mr. Lally's gonna turn that information over to the defense and to the court." No, that's what he should have done. What he did do is he responded, "Get Elizabeth one," his wife. In other words, "Get the gift for my wife." It'll be a little less obvious. So now we have the lead investigator from Mass- Massachusetts State Police literally discussing the exchange of gifts between the Albert family on the one hand and the Proctor family on the other hand, as a thank you, their words for helping the Alberts out of a jam. And if you looked up quid pro quo in the dictionary, you would find this set of text messages. Two years later, to the day, on February 1st, 2024, now let's fast forward two years later, now Michael Proctor finds himself on the witness stand in front of a federal grand jury, which we just found out about. That grand jury was tasked with a singular commission, and that was investigating crimes of public corruption by law enforcement in relation to this case. And during that testimony, he started with these and and myriad other examples of evidence of his close ties to the Albert family. And he admitted to an AUSA under very intense questioning that not only does he know the Alberts, and does he socialize with them, does he drink with them, does he go to pool parties with them, but he told his partner Yuri Buknik all of this before Yuri Buknik testified at the grand jury and before he and Buknik actually interviewed Chris Albert. Why does that mean something? Why does that mean something to the court and to this argument? Because when Yuri Buknik testified before the state court grand jury, he testified that, quote, "Following formal introductions," end quote, Julie Albert and Chris Albert provided their phone numbers. Following formal introductions, that was a clear deceit on the grand jurors. Yuri Buknik knew, as did Michael Proctor, they didn't need formal introductions. Michael Proctor was considering having Julie Albert babysit his kid 10 days ago, actually, at that time, 13 days ago. That left the grand jury with the intentional false impression that these people literally do not know each
Wait, was there a gasp in the court right there? I want to go back and listen to that. I think there was a like a collective gasp from the galley. Let's listen.
Clear deceit on the grand jurors. Yuri Buknik knew, as did Michael Proctor, they didn't need formal introductions. Michael Proctor was considering having Julie Albert babysit his kid 10 days ago, actually, at that time, 13 days ago. That left the grand jury with the intentional false impression that these people literally do not know each other. They've never been in contact. They're complete strangers. That was a lie. That was a concerted effort to hide that relationship and to hide the conflict of interest. And the grand jurors were fooled. They were left with the impression, it's Michael Proctor, Yuri Buknik, they don't know these folks. They're completely neutral, independent investigators, and nothing could be further from the truth. And the revelation of this evidence culminated in front of that same grand jury on February 1st, 2024. Under additional intense questioning by the Assistant United States Attorney, Proctor was caught in his own web of deceit and testified as follows, quote, "So ob-" this is the AUSA talking or asking the questions. So obviously, we're asking questions about your relationship with Julie Albert, with Chris Albert, and with Colin Albert. Do you understand that? Answer, yes, sir. Question. And you're saying that you're minimizing, quote, minimizing your relationship to the grand jury, correct? Answer, yes. He finally, under the scrutiny of a federal grand jury, admitted that he had been lying about his relationship to the Alberts, which means he lied to the grand jury, which means the evidence was distorted in front of the grand jury. And that is the burden that Odell requires.
All right. So your time is up, which includes me interjecting. Do you want five more minutes?
Please. Of course we want five more minutes. Yes, please. I want to hear five more minutes of this. Thank you, Auntie Bev. If you're just joining in, I just saw a big flux of people come in. We're just waiting for the Canton Select Board meeting to start. That'll start in about three minutes or so. Uh, we're just going back and replaying from, uh, the hearing today, the Karen Reed hearing today. Hopefully, we get the the five minutes before, uh, the Select Board meeting starts.
Questions I asked as well. All right, I know you're reciting the evidence, um, that I've read. But so I'll I'll give you five more minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to shift gears to a, uh, another example or another series of examples of evidence that was distorted before the grand jury. Um, and that deals with the use of or the the, um, insinuation of Kevin Albert, yet another Albert at the behest of Michael Proctor. Kevin Albert is a sworn Canton
Okay, here's the thing. I'm gonna make this, and I don't why I don't know why I have to say this every single stream. Uh, I have no control over the audio and the video. I don't know why. It's it's up all the way. It's up all the way. I have no control over it. I say this every single stream. I I don't know what else to tell everybody. Turn your volume up. I don't know what to tell you. I have 50% of the crowd that says everything sounds great, and then I have 50% of the crowd that keeps saying, I can't hear it. I don't know what to tell you. I'm not talking. I have my microphone on mute. It's just the way that it is. I I I cannot control the volume. I can't control it. I I if I had an 11 button on it, I would do it, believe me. I'm hearing it fine. It sounds fine to me. Uh, but it just, uh, it gets frustrating in the chat. I I can't control the volume. It's if you have a audio problem, take it up with the people that set up the audio in the courtroom. It's just it gets kind of mind numbing after a while. I can't control it. It's just it is what it is. I don't know what to tell you. Turn your hearing aid up. I don't know. It's just a, oh, shit, man. Just I can't do anything about it. If I could, I I would, believe me. Hi. All right, we're just waiting for the Select Board meeting to start. I'm just waiting for the Select Board meeting to start. Here we go. Volume is all the way up. Is my microphone lower? That was not me. I had a phone call that I had to take. Oh, this this audio is great.
First of all, I'd like to, um, Elliot Norman Zade passed away on March 6, 2024. Some of the late Hyman and Emma Francis Zade, beloved husband of Denise Zade, beloved father David Zade of Worcester, Mark and his wife Helen of Brockton, and Mark is a plumbing and gas inspector he has been for the last 10 or so years. Um, and Gary and his wife Donna, also of Brockton, chair's grandfather Jack and Sam Zade, Ashley, her husband Pat Crawford of Brockton, and Karen, her husband Eric Cranston of Rhode Island, and great-grandfather of Madison and Adam Crawford of Brockton. That's first gentleman, like I have a few prayers. And, uh, the second, unfortunately, is Charles James Jerome Miller. Charlie Quincy, formerly of Canton, unexpectedly passed away on February 27th, 2024. Um, Charlie was the son of Dean Miller and Ann Miller of Canton. Dean served this town for five years as a member of the Canton Planning Board. Um, and our last few who keep, um, Charlie survived by his wife Courtney Miller, his mother and father, as I said, and then Dean Miller of Canton, his sister Maggie Miller Sweet and her husband Mike of Old Line, Connecticut, his grandmother Joan Tripp of Saginaw, Hobart, New York, his aunt Kim Tripp of New York, and Sarah Tripp, a white of Tampa, Florida. And with family and friends who love them, he will be sorely and greatly missed. So I'd ask, uh, board members, ladies and gentlemen, if you have a moment of silence and memory and honor of both, uh, Mark Zade's father and, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Miller, their son, uh, Charlie, who passed away, if you could, please. May they rest in peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
First thing I need to do, Mr. Lawson.
Uh, we have the competitive procurement guideline approval for Canton Electricity Choice, uh, and we have, uh, Tom Birmingham presenting.
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Select Board members. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Tom Birmingham, and I am Chair of Canton's Energy Advisory Committee. I am joined tonight by Paul Gromer from Mass Power Choice, who is helping Canton navigate our Canton Electricity Choice journey. Thank you for being here, Paul. As you know, I will be asking you to approve tonight an important set of guidelines that, if approved, will be used to inform whether the town administrator signs a competitive electricity supply contract as early as tomorrow. This is a critical step in delivering Canton's Electricity Choice Program, which was first approved by the town voters at the 2022 Annual Town Meeting. As you may recall, the last time I presented before the Select Board in February and since then, there have been a number of good questions raised, especially around how customers get automatically enrolled and whether they can choose not to participate. Believe me, I've been in the energy business for 30 years, and it's not easy to get our arms around this concept. So, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'll take a few minutes to address some of the questions that we've been hearing and try to make sure everyone is comfortable with tonight's vote and what that means going forward.
Please, thank you.
Canton Electricity Choice is like a bulk buying club where the town negotiates a single favorable contract to supply electricity to our residents and businesses over some fixed period, like two years, 24 months. This provides several benefits, including price stability, cleaner electricity, and hopefully lower prices over the term of the contract compared to Eversource's basic service rate that we would not otherwise be able to, uh, do on our own. While program savings cannot be guaranteed because Eversource's basic service rate fluctuates every six months for residential customers, history shows this program has saved a lot of money for mass residents and businesses over time. Um, there are approximately 167 other towns and cities in Massachusetts that participate in this program already. Eversource will remain our local electric distribution company. This was all made possible back in 1997, when the Mass Law changed and allowed competition in the supply of electricity. Eversource does a fine job, and the wires, meters, and local infrastructure will still be managed by them. Just to give a quick overview of where we are in the program, I'd like to turn this slide so the audience can see. At this point in time, for the sake of brevity, where where that red arrow is, we're in the fourth step of a six-step process, and we're just about with tonight's approval, assuming it's approved, that we'll be able to enter our procurement contract, as I said, as early as tomorrow. If that contract is signed into tomorrow, based on the guidelines that I'm asking you to approve tonight, then we would go into the fifth step, which is a public notification and education process. And then finally, we would launch the program. If the contract is signed tomorrow, then we would expect the program to begin in, uh, June of 2024. If it's not signed tomorrow, the next possible date to do this would be, uh, as soon as October of 2024, and we would begin that process in August. So that's where we are tonight. Um, let me just, uh, review. So the competitive procurement process guidelines that you're being asked to vote on have five components to them. There's pricing goals, there's renewable energy content, there's contract duration, supplier credentials, and market conditions, and something called an operational adder. These five elements set in in these guidelines provide the town administrator with the guardrails that he will need to make a decision on whether to go or not go forward with a supply procurement contract. So the details of these, um, guidelines is provided to you previously to tonight, and hopefully you've had a chance to review them. Uh, if not, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have on those. Um, but if I may just continue.
Wait, yes.
For the audience particularly, it's important to understand this program provides four different options, all of which are voluntary. Option one is called the default or also named the standard green option. Option two is something called opt-up or the Canton plus green. Option three is the opt-down, called the Canton basic option. And then finally, there's an opt-out option. So anybody that does not want to participate in these options one, two, or three has the right with no no penalties and no fees to opt out and go stay with, uh, Eversource's basic service rate. It may help if I show an illustration of this on the next slide. Going left to right, the description of what the program elements are under Canton Electricity Choice. The second column is Eversource Basic Service. That's the that's the everybody currently is on, most everybody is on Eversource's basic rate. Canton Basic is the opt-down option. Canton Standard Green is the default, and Canton Plus Green is the opt-up option. The example to help illustrate the pricing, this is not what we expect to see tomorrow necessarily. This is just an example. But today, roughly, Eversource's basic service rate is around 17 cents per kilowatt hour. What we would were advocating for with this program, the guidelines establish this, is that if the Canton basic rate is not equal to or less than the Eversource rate, then this program is, we would not recommend, uh, town administrator signing that. We would wait for another opportunity and see how the prices change. What we hope to see is that there's a price benefit of signing up for this or being automatically enrolled into the Canton Standard Green option. What that does is provides, as in this example, a price benefit, and it also increases the amount of renewable electricity that customers would be paying for, up to 25% more than what the current level is being provided by Eversource. Finally, Canton Plus Green is the, um, highest green option. In this example, we're showing that it would be comparable at 17 cents a kilowatt hour to Eversource basic current basic service rate at 17 cents per kilowatt hour. That means for the same price, you get to increase your renewable energy content by approximately 50% more than your, um, basic service option would provide you. So those are, that's a lot to cover in a couple minutes, but hopefully that paints a picture for everybody to see what the options are. If you do not want the default Canton Standard Green and you want to opt up to the Canton Plus Green, you need to make a phone call or go on the website. you need to make a phone call or go on the website, and we have that information available. If you want to opt down to Canton Basic, phone call, website. If you want to opt out, back to Eversource Basic, you have to either, phone call or website are fine, but we'll also be providing an opt-out reply card in the mail to every customer on record with Eversource that's eligible. So.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Tom, would those cards be in your Eversource bill or milled separately?
Information about the program along with the opt-out card, that will come in a separate mailing on its own.
Thank you.
I did include a picture of it so people can know. When it comes in the package, it will be clearly identified from the town as well. So this is a town-sponsored program. The town seal will be on the envelope so people understand this is legitimate, town-sanctioned program. In the package is the sample opt-out reply card. So again, if you're not comfortable, you want to stay with Eversource, you've signed that card, you date it, you send it back in, and then your account will remain on Eversource, no change whatsoever.
Can you just explain to the people, because a lot of the questions I've been asked is, why can't we opt in as opposed to having to opt out?
The law is set up this program to automatically opt in customers, that default service. That was intended in part to provide the suppliers with enough customers to justify a lower, more competitive rate in better terms. So the law allows, anticipates this buying club providing enough customers for the supplier to make it worth their while.
And just to clarify that you have every opportunity to opt out at any given time, you have every opportunity to opt back in at any given time with no penalty?
Correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Birmingham?
Okay.
So, Mr. Loughran. Are you done, Tom, or is there?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I cut you off?
No, no, no. What I put, if we're ready to go through this, if you're okay, subject to any questions from the audience, Mr. Loughran, I did include some suggested motion language.
Mr. Chair, just one question.
Yeah.
On the duration of the contract, is it standard twenty-four months? It's every twenty-four months, this is going to be reviewed for the pricing?
We have a choice of how long that term is. We're recommending twenty-four months at this point, based on the current market conditions, price stability, and a couple of other reasons. We could do shorter, twelve months, six months, doesn't really make sense because that's kind of what the normal change would be. And you can go out as far as, I think you've seen, three years or thirty-six months. But generally, at this point, we're thinking twenty-four months, depending on how all these pricing contracts, supply offers come in tomorrow.
And the last thing I wanted to mention is on the mailing of the opt-out, opt-in, is there a phone number that a person that doesn't have the internet or computer can call and get questions answered directly for those people?
Phone number, website, and address are all going to be prominently included.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question, if I may. I know it's very hypothetical, but I just want to ask, what happens if they don't, if the company doesn't get enough, a lot of people, everybody opts out, they, can they pull the plug unless, no pun intended?
Great question.
You know what I'm saying?
Great question.
I don't think it's going to ever happen.
Right.
But maybe it has some way, you know better than I know.
Yep. So you're right on both counts. So it never has happened, but if it did, so say, everybody opted out except for Tom, the supplier is still committed to honor the price for the term of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, any questions from the audience? Please step up to them, I can just identify you, please, so please.
I just have a question regarding other suppliers. If you wanted to opt out, could, can you, do you have to go back to Eversource, or can you go to another supplier?
You can definitely go to another supplier. And there's, there is, they're in the marketplace now.
Okay.
And there are some people in Canton currently already using another supplier today. Yeah. So, yeah, you, you can stay right where you are, no problem.
Okay. I just didn't know, because the rates change so often, that's why I was curious. Okay.
Yeah, one of the benefits of this program is it'll give you a longer term than what you may be used to seeing under your current supply arrangement.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, Tom, if I'm enrolled in a green energy provider now, will they be automatically notified, I'm going into the Canton Choice? I don't have to do anything, or do I have to get out of that program?
Yeah, so, so if you're with a competitive supplier now, two things. One is, you're not part of the automatic enrollment pool, so you won't get automatically changed, you'll just stay where you are. But if you wanted to join the program, you can just call the program. You don't need to tell the other supplier that you want to leave. It's a good practice to do so, though, because sometimes those contracts have a termination penalty if you do leave. The town's program will not, but sometimes those third-party programs do, so it would be wise to check with them. But technically, you don't. You could just contact the town and get enrolled in the town program.
Okay.
And just what I had asked the last time, just to restate it, that if the power goes out, Eversource still handles the outages and things of that nature. Everything is basically business as is. Like if there's a windstorm, which we're very familiar with, so they'd, they'd come and fix the poles of the tree with, and then that would be the same, correct? Okay, just want to make sure that's public, because there was some concerns, who do I call? My lights go out.
Right, exactly. Eversource, just like before.
Exactly. Thank you.
Win-win situation, pretty much.
Yep.
Great, great. So do we need, or do we have a motion, Mr. Loughran?
So I have it from the presentation. So I make a motion that the select board approve the competitive procurement process guidelines as presented by the Chair of the CEAC.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, zero.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you very much. Just on a positive note, I'd like to thank Chair Theodore and the select board member Loughran for your leadership and behind-the-scenes support on this. I much appreciate it. Town administrator duty, I know we've got some work ahead of us, but thank you for your steady guidance, responsiveness, and can-do attitude. We have a small but mighty committee, the CEAC Committee Members, Christine Smith, Emily Torres Cullinan, and Carl Engelberg. Thank you for all your time and effort on this. I know it was a lot of meetings to get us to this point. A quick shout-out to Jen Wexler and her merry band of volunteers from the Canton residents for a sustainable, equitable future. You lit the fire, and we got it going. And finally, thank you, Paul, and your team for all you're doing for us. Appreciate it.
And the select board, thank you all, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Good job.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next on the agenda, Mr. Loughran.
Next, Mr. Chair, we have a discussion on the MBTA Community Zoning Pre-Adoption Review, and I will defer to our town planner and the Chair of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the select board. We're here tonight to briefly update the board on the general progress and status of the town of Canton's proposed zoning article for achieving compliance with Section 3A MBTA Community Zoning Law. We hosted two public forums. One was in the evening at the library in December, and then we had one during the day right here in the sala meeting room in January. The planning board has also held two public hearings at each of their last two meetings. As you know, the working group appointed by the select board has been working diligently for over a year at developing, tweaking, and continuously improving the specifics of the zoning. We've shopped around some different map boundaries, dimensional limitations, and just test-fitting different scenarios, always trying to find what's best for Canton. We've solicited feedback from the public, from the planning board, the Affordable Housing Trust, the Economic Development Committee, the Master Plan Committee, and the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan Committee. It's truly been a team effort. So one thing we want to talk about tonight is pre-adoption feedback. Now, the state offers something called pre-adoption feedback, and what that is, is they will look at our proposed zoning ahead of going to town meeting, because, and this is a good thing, because the last thing we want to do is bring something to town meeting, gets voted on, and then the state says it doesn't comply for some technicality in the language. So we appreciate them giving us the free review and giving us the feedback. We submitted it back in November, but due to their ninety-day maximum turnaround period, we only received it in February, once the warrant had already been printed and advertised. There were a handful of minor points to address, mostly language tweaks that the working group was okay with correcting, but nonetheless, they would still require the amendment to what was printed in the warrant. One comment in particular stood out. The state pointed out that there are many lots in the proposed district that are below the one-acre minimum lot size that the working group is proposing. They suggested, when I say suggested, that we lower the minimum lot size in order to make more of the lots conform, and that was, they believed it was in accordance with the purpose of the laws, what they stated. The working group met last week to go over that and just other feedback we'd received along the way with planning board and public hearings and whatnot, and really put the final tweaks on what the working group wants to get behind. And the working group feels very strongly that we're unanimously opposed to lowering that lot size, as was suggested. We know there are a number of smaller lots in Canton Junction area. The town of Canton, not the state, but the town, had identified this area as a target for transit-oriented development in the master plan and in the Canton Junction study years before the state law was filed. So this was, you know, this area was in the works for a while. And the working group feels strongly in the acre minimum, because it guarantees the ten percent of the units would be affordable, and that thirty percent of each lot would be open space. We're talking about an area with a lot of impervious surface area, that means asphalt parking lots right now, not a whole lot of green space and open space, so that was important to the group. And simply allowing, for example, a duplex to become a triplex does nothing to increase affordability or open space. Now, that, that Stoughton strategy, and it works for them, and we respect that, but it wasn't the same, not the best strategy for Canton. The town has a vision of transit-oriented housing in that area. In that vision, the working group believes depends on those projects of critical mass that will have a net positive impact to the area, and to attract those types of developments, we believe the acre minimum is necessary to get that open space and those affordable units as a component of any new development. We've exceeded all the required thresholds set out by the law, the acreage, the unit capacity, and the density. We've exceeded those with what we're proposing. The law allows us to set those parameters, such as minimum lot size, height setbacks, whatnot, and what we're proposing clearly achieves the point of compliance, even with the one-acre minimum lot size. So at this time, we've drafted a response letter to the state acknowledging, thanking them for their feedback, acknowledging that we've made all the corrections. However, with their suggestion on the minimum lot size, we're going to stick with what we came up with, and pending town council's review and endorsement of our position, we would hope for the select board's authoring and sending, proving and signing and sending of our draft letter. So thank you for your consideration.
A quick question, Stoughtons. I did see the letter here that they sent back to us, and we've done everything that they've asked us to do.
Yes.
Now, in this letter that they sent back to you at the Calhoun Review and Analysis, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has determined that the application submitted does not demonstrate that the subjects will meet the requirements. So to me, that seems like they're moving the goalposts on us. I mean, we've done everything to the letter of the law, so.
Well, in that letter, there were a number of technical things that we needed to address, such as things in the site plan language, some overlap with the groundwater district. We misinterpreted part of the income limitations as ten and ten, when it was really ten total. So there were a lot of little things that we did need to correct, that they had correct in that letter.
So by standing firm to that one acre, that's, that's not an issue?
Yeah, we believe that that was a suggestion, and that we still check out what we had.
We did follow majority of what they requested.
So, okay, okay, that clarifies that. Any other questions, or?
No, and I think that the key is, I know the governor's already said she wants to work, willing to work with cities and towns. So, and I'm not putting words in town council's mouth, but he did say that this does meet the letter of the law, our original, our original motion that's imprinted in the warrant that's already been gone to print. So I'm concerned that they're going to come back and say, oh, no, no, we told you that didn't, that's not, that can't happen, and I don't know if the town council wants to weigh in, but I'm, I'm in favor of the one acre, because triple-deckers and things of that nature, that's not what I'm in favor of. And as you said, it won't be automatically affordable housing. But she's, the governor's always said that she's willing and able to work and wants to work with cities and towns. I hope she does. I'll say that publicly, loud and clear, and she wants to come, this is what we're going to be planning on submitting, and I could support it that way. If it goes back under the one acre, I couldn't support it.
Right.
And a lot of other people that I've talked to, spoken to me, have the same concerns and questions, because this is Canton, it's not a city. It's not, it's not. So that's why a lot of people moved here, so, thank you.
I think to your comment, and Mr. Connelly, too, the fact, the one portion that we're going to have to say on the floor, the ten percent workforce we can't have, which was put into the warrant, so I will have to go on the floor and have that stricken when we actually go to vote at town meeting.
And that, this is, that's what the full working group recommended, correct?
Correct.
Because they came back and told us to change it, and it was tweaked, and I wasn't too happy with that, to be quite honest, but now it's gone back to the original, correct?
The original, plus the little tweaks, like on, yeah.
Eyes and, yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Got the i's and crossed the t's and things of that nature.
But the one acre, we're sticking with it.
And I assume town council, he's a lot more knowledgeable than I am, that, so yes, that is correct, and I respect both of you, because you put a lot of work into this, and Kevin, you as well, so thank you. But I'm just concerned that, you know, put your money where your mouth is, not you, the governor, you want to work with us, we want to work with you. There's going to be a lot, a lot more Milton's out there, a lot more.
Definitely, there's going to be a lot more questions.
Are they going to sue every town, city in town in this, in the Commonwealth? I don't, I hope not.
Right.
You know?
The Commonwealth.
So, Mr. Durantus, is that the?
Mr. Durantus, that town council?
So I wanted to make one comment, which is that we're asking you to support this subject to town council revisions.
Yes.
One of the reasons for that is that today is a, a meeting going on at the Mass Municipal Association, at which we are analyzing the responses made to all the communities who have submitted.
Who's the guy dressed up like a shake?
To see if they are saying something different for Canton as opposed to, let's say, Stoughton or someone else. That is happening today. I don't have the results of that, I had somebody attending that, that meeting. So we are learning more about what the state is doing and what they're up to by looking at everything they've done to date for all communities. So I'm asking that you include in any motion that is subject to additional revisions from town council.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do not, and I'm not enthused about this at all. I have a real, real, I've asked them a bunch of questions, I still haven't got answers, such as how many multifamily units currently exist in the zone, how many will be added? If we put a blank on the acreage that we have in the zone, if it was all blank and you can develop it, how many units could be put on that whole blank spot? Forget there's anything there, how many units could be put there under the guidelines of the, on the paper we received from February first, from the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, the notable change in language is the word permit from the zoning board in the law, the language. The word permit wants to be special permit, any type of thing with permitting with the zoning board, because this is by right. When it's by right, the zoning board has very, very little authorization. They follow the guidelines of the setbacks, size lots, what have you have, and it eliminates the abut. So if you have a lot across the street from your beautiful, single-family home...
So, if you have a lot across the street from your beautiful, single-family home, and it's in the zoning, you could be looking at 15 units across the street from your house. So, in some of these areas that are in this, and I know the group has done a lot of work in trying to locate these areas, when you do something by right, you're taking the authority of the zoning board to protect the abuttes, and I have a real problem with that. In the years that I served on the zoning board, this town made zoning less dense in the years I served. They changed the zoning of golf courses, so that you could have houses on golf courses when they sold with minimal one-acre lots. They changed zonings all over the town to make it less dense, to make it harder to build. And now, in this area, we're going to make it easier to build more lots. And there's one thing that Mr. Theodore mentioned earlier, and the language is about establishing the minimum-sized lots. If these minimal-sized lots go below one acre, if you have a single family in this zone with 15,000 square feet, you may be able to build a three-family unit. So, you've got to consider the single-family house next to a single-family house getting to, this could open up Pandora's box without any protections. The zoning board is here to protect the abuttes, and I stand by the zoning board. I did it for many years on the zoning board, and I have a real hard time of accepting a by right. So, that is where I'm standing. If I, if I got some of these answers, if this was a blank, how many acres in this whole zoning?
150.
150 acres times 15 units, if it was a blank slate. Am I, just off the top of my head, right, just rough math, it's over the number that they're talking about. I'm just telling you, if there's 150 available acres in Canton, and they're allowed to build 15 units on an acre, it's over the 1490. So, we have to look at all the numbers, and, and then there's another big cause, because we're really concerned in this town, is affordable housing. Section 3A does not include any express requirement or authorization for the MBTA community to acquire affordable units in the multifamily housing project. The town wants to. We're taking a little bit of power away from the zoning board trying to enforce it, but if we put 15 units up, and 10% is 1.5 units, we should minimal out of 15 units get two to be ahead of the curve on the affordable units. If we're not guaranteed those two units, we're already falling behind the 10%. So, these are the things that we have to answer before we vote on this, because we don't want to be stuck with building these units and then falling behind the 10% and doing so. So, these are just basic things that we look at, and the developers, the developers aren't concerned about our 10%, they're the maximum profit. And then the rents, what are the rents going to be? And the number of bedrooms, there's no limit to the amount of bedrooms they can build in these. It's not two-bedroom units, single-bedroom units, you can build three or four-bedroom units. If you build three or four bedroom units, families will come, which is great, they come to this community. We are maxed out in our elementary schools. We are engaged in a middle school project now to try and alleviate the elementary schools and keep things going. If we build four-bedrooms apartments and three kids come in these each units at 15 units, where are we gonna get the money to educate all these children? It's just a possibility, doesn't mean it's going to happen, no one's saying it's going to be built, but it's a possibility it can, and we have to think about those possibilities that this could affect our, basically, operation of our community, especially our schools, when we are building a school, we were hoping to build, we're working on it, to build a school that's going to alleviate 10, 15 years down the road of overcrowding. I mean, I've lived in this town, I went to the Kennedy, I went to the middle school, I was the first freshman in the middle school. It's 50 years old, it needs to be dealt with. I cannot stand those temporary classrooms.
By the way, I can't wait to get my MicroDocs merch.
And it's something that we have...
I did a large order last night, so can't wait.
We're looking at something that could definitely affect a whole section of this community, and traffic isn't a concern, it isn't in zoning anymore, because you can't do traffic studies, because everybody knows the traffic's bad. It's already bad. So, if you increase it by 100 cars, it's just going to get worse. And yes, we all know the cut-throughs. My neighborhoods are cut through, all these neighborhoods are cut through. Traffic committee's going crazy trying to slow traffic in this town. And then we've got speed bumps in every neighborhood.
Merch rules, man. So good.
How much can we do? We're expanding, but our infrastructure isn't handling it. So, this is just something I'm concerned about, and I'm totally, I'm very concerned about this by right. So, that's all I have to say, thank you, sir.
Anybody else have anything to add, or?
Oh, the last thing I would like to just say is about the affordable housing, is I went on a website today just to find out, you know, you look at the rents in the community, how much are the rents in the community? What do we get? 3,000, 3,500, 4,000 a month? All right? Who sets the rent? Is it landlord, the state? Who sets? Well, just the voucher programs that the state of Massachusetts offers. In Canton, the value or voucher, section eight voucher, using Canton for a two-bedroom apartment, $3,650. A MRVP voucher, voucher Canton, Mass, two-bedroom, $3,300. Another voucher program, which is the alternate housing program, $3,350. These are not affordable rents. Based on the 30% housing rate that they're talking, income, you'd have to bring home clear $10,000, $9,000 to pay a month in a household income to make this affordable rent. Think about that. Think about your kids, think about your family trying to get into these apartments. They're not affordable, so we're going to look at how we can make them affordable. And even at the medium income, it's not on mom and dad's salary, or dad's salary, or two roommate's salary, it's based on a family income, 18 years old. If you live in public housing, 18 years old, that income is counted towards their rent. So, you're going to look at how it's all calculated, and how it works, and how we're trying to get our people to afford to live in the community. So, that was just a tidbit I wanted to say, and how things are actually affecting this community and where we're headed. So, thank you very much.
No, so, just to clarify, we are required by law to send this to town meeting, so what we're approving is Canton's plan to go to town meeting. So, that's just to clarify, so...
And I understand that, I will vote to send it to town meeting, but I will, apparently right now, I'm opposed to it.
Right, so...
Just so you know, my vote, yes, we'll send it to town meeting, but I'm not...
Sometimes it's hard to tell, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So, I make a motion to approve the MBTA community zoning pre-adoption as prepared by our town planner and the planning board, subject to any additional revisions from town council.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any other further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Guys, a lot of work, thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate your...
Enough with the masks, come on.
Next on the agenda. Next, Mr. Chair, the select board is going to vote on positions for the annual town meeting articles.
It's well worth it, Karen.
So, at our last...
Thousand in the chat, thank you so much.
Voted.
Thousand in the chat, across all platforms, thank you.
Last meeting, we voted to provide a position on the first, 17, so we have 18 to 37 to go through tonight. My computer is, I'm a little... All right.
Do you have them?
So, Article 18, so if, if there's a question from the board, the finance director is here to bail me out, or the town administrator, if there's a question, but... So, Article 18 is an appropriation to increase the special education reserve account. So, this is a practice that we've done a few times to help the schools have like a little bit of money in a savings account to deal with the unknown special education costs, because they don't know what it's going to be as the years going on and changes.
One child moves into the town and...
Yep, yep, immediately wipes it out. So, that is Article 18. So, I make a motion that the select board approve or support Article 18 as written in the warrant.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Article 19, similar. This is an appropriation to increase the capital stabilization account. So, if no questions, I make a motion that we support Article 19 as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Article 20 is to establish the 1860 Washington Street redevelopment stabilization account. So, this is the former St. Gerard's property, and what this request is to do is to put money aside for when we start moving forward with redeveloping that property, based on the recommendations from the committee, that we have some money established for this to lessen the burden on the taxpayer.
And this is, Mr. Chairman, this is what we did with the Galvin School.
Yes, Galvin School, same thing.
Is that correct? Put money in so we can be ahead of the curve? So, things, something comes up we want to do in the future, because obviously, we bought that property to do something with it. Mr. Chairman, is this planned to be an annual, or is just the one time for this year?
It's, can be under consideration. Every year, just like the capital stabilization account, which is currently an earmark to go towards the debt service costs associated with the Galvin School, if that gets approved. So, that comes up annually, this will be the third year for that one, the previous article. This is the first time for this article, and if the town has the resources next time around, and there's a will to put it forward again, it could be.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, hopefully, we will. Hopefully, the money will be there.
Yep.
The way things are going, we don't know.
So, I make a motion that the select board support Article 20 as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Article 21 is to rescind unused borrowing authorizations, and this is typical in the town meeting warrant, but I don't know, Randy, if you just want to provide a little sure of it.
These are, these are borrowing authorizations that the town has, has approved in the past, but the projects have been completed, and so there's no further need to have these authorizations to borrow. The town has no intent to use them to borrow, so it's the best practice is to clean them off the books. That way, when you go for a credit rating, you're not getting the question, well, you've got these other authorizations you could borrow for, what's going on with that? So, rather be able to not have to answer that question by saying we've rescinded everything we don't need.
Makes sense.
So, I make a motion that the select board support Article 21 as written in the warrant.
Second.
All in favor? Motion made, seconded. Any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Mr. Chair, Article 22 is to transfer the opioid settlement funds into a newly-created opioid special revenue fund. So, the settlement funds, as the board knows, is what the town has agreed in a class action suit, and the funds that are received, we would like to put into the special revenue fund, and then it can be used specifically for opioid-related projects, funding programs, things like that. So, CAS would have access to it, the fire department, the police department.
Our opioids.
Yeah. Board of Health, so it would give access to an account specifically related to opioid-related programs.
Do we have a, I'm just curious, is there a dollar figure on that?
Yes, so, this is a technical correction by the state. The dollar-figure amount is approximately 153,000, 154,000. So, when we started to receive these funds two years ago, we were required to put them into the general fund, because the Department of Revenue said, well, you can't segregate them, because there's no law that says you can segregate them, even though they're for a dedicated purpose, opioid abatement. So, they finally corrected that this past December, and they gave us a mechanism to then now pull these funds that have been sitting in the general fund, which we've earmarked, you know, each piece of it, and so now we can move it with this vote, we can move it into the special revenue fund, which is a fund that can be accessed by the chief executive based on recommendations for opioid abatement, and then any future funds that we receive, which we will receive much more over time, will be able to deposit directly into this account. So, it's, it's directly accessible for use without appropriation.
Okay.
And that's, that's what we need, that's what we wanted farther before, and I had read an article that some cities and towns are diverting the money to things, other things that, not with opioids.
We haven't done that, we will not do that.
No, we will not, we don't want, can't do that.
Want to make it available so it can be used for opioid abatement.
So, I make a motion that the select board approve, support Article 22 as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any questions or comments on the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Article 23 is the appropriation of proceeds from the TNC per-ride assessment funds. So, Mr. Scarlands, yep?
Yes, this, this article is no longer required, there was a change in the state law this past year that allows these funds to be, to be used from a special revenue fund without further appropriation. I believe it's the planning board who puts forward projects for this. So, this is, so we left this in here just to memorialize the fact that we won't be bringing this forward again unless we get over 25,000, which we haven't, we've averaged like 6,000 to 8,000. So, for 25,000, we have to bring it forward. But if not, the funds just go directly to the special revenue account, which is where they are right now, and so we don't need to appropriate anything.
Okay. So, we don't need to take a position, because the, I assume Finance Committee will indefinitely postpone.
Yes, that's, that's how they voted.
Okay. Article 24, this is to amend the bylaw, Article 4, Section 12, regarding voting in Section 17, the motion to require the use of written ballots. So, this is an article to allow written ballots at future town meetings. Correct?
Well, this, this ties into the, the ability to use electronic voting.
Yep.
So, this would allow, you know, electronic voting to be an option during town meeting, but still maintaining, you know, the moderator having the ability to use written ballots should electronic voting not be available.
Okay. All right, so, I make a motion that the select board support Article 24 as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Next article is Article 25. So, Ms. Thomas, is this the one you want to come speak on?
Is it the article number?
Yep, Article 25, I was second-guessing myself, too.
I just opened the article nine number, is this the Finance Committee one or the modernization one?
This is the Finance Committee, having to do with the language changes.
So, just to clarify, the purpose of this is to make modifications in the language to strike the phase, the phrase involving appropriation, and replace it with the phrase "having a financial impact on the town, including but not limited to appropriations," and in Section 4, similar language. So, it really is intended to be more consistent with current practice, and I think from a rationalization point of view, think about something like is going to be discussed later about a DIF, and, you know, the way with, if you just keep this at appropriations, it's like, well, wouldn't you want the Finance Committee weighing in on that? Something that has a tax impact, that has impact on revenue, not just expenses, and this is very much consistent with past practice. And in fact, the bylaws actually require that the Finance Committee make recommendations on articles in the warrant, and doesn't actually specify. So, we're just trying to kind of clean up some language, particularly based on some feedback we received after this special town meeting. So, the Finance Committee has voted to support this bylaw change.
Any other questions on this? Any have any questions for Ms. Thomas? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the select board support Article 25 as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Star, you might as well.
Go on to the next one.
Does, so, which one?
Which one is this, the next one?
Give me one second.
It's down a couple more.
Yeah.
It's thirty.
Thank you. All right. So do you want to give a brief narrative on Article thirty?
Sure. So Article thirty proposes a government, government modernization committee. And the Finance Committee voted prior to the warrant being finalized to submit an article for government, government modernization. That article was modified by town council and we appreciate his insights based on his experience doing this work in other towns. However, the Finance Committee wants to do some additional work to make some further adjustments or within whatever mechanisms were allowed within the town meeting structure. We initially proposed a governance in bylaw committee. It was changed in the warrant to just bylaw. I think it's the feeling of the Finance Committee that those two, you kind of can't untangle them. There's a lot in our bylaws that relates to governance. So to just sort of do the bylaws without that. However, one of the things that we also got feedback on that I think was, you know, right on spot is timeline. So the article as it's proposed now would have recommendations coming forward to the annual town meeting in 2025. That actually isn't enough time to do the work. It's not enough time to do the work in general, but also if you think about the timelines we have for the warrant, your committee gets appointed by July one, everything has to be into the, you know, for the warrant in December and January, that's not enough time to do the work. So I think, you know, what you'll be seeing is probably a motion coming from the Finance Committee that will make some adjustments in timeline, probably wanting to stay with governance, not just bylaws. And, and also some adjustments to the membership because that was also changed from the original article. We have no objections to the membership that was proposed, that was put in by town council, but want a stronger voice from the residents. Right now, it was a majority of town employees who need to be there. They know the mechanics, they know how town hall runs, they understand, you know.
Thought she was going to say they know the McAlberts.
But we also feel that we need at least one, maybe two more citizens who have also knowledge and experience and desire to have input into changes that may go forward in our town. So I think that, you know, once the FinCom finalizes and votes on our motion, we'd be happy to kind of come back and talk to you about that. At this point, we'd encourage your support for the article, understanding that we may recommend, our motion may recommend some changes. And I, we'll just say, you know, some people say, well, why do we need this? We don't, you know, why, why do we have to do anything? I think that if you dig into the bylaws, and I'm sure many of you have, you find sometimes more questions than you do answers. You know, one of the questions that's been come, has come to me recently, when we had a whole lot more people go to town meeting, they said, so how does the moderator get picked? And I had someone say to me, well, you know, I think I'm going to go to the annual town meeting and I'm going to ask to be nominated for moderator. And for those folks who don't know, there's a lot of preparation work that goes. So the person who expects to be pointed moderator at town meeting is generally involved beginning in March and April, working with people to, you know, town officials, select board, Finance Committee, others, to do the preparation in order that that town meeting is going to run smoothly. But if you look at our bylaw, it doesn't tell you how the, how the, what the nominee, you know, other than it will be nominated from town meeting floor. Well, that would never work to have somebody stand up and say, I want to be the moderator and get elected right there on town meeting floor. Mr. Heinz is here, he can tell you. That would be very terrible for everybody.
Ninety-five percent of my time spent on a town meeting is spent prior to the town meeting itself.
Right, yeah. And then the other issue is that our bylaws haven't been looked at in a holistic way. We have had tweaks here and there, language changes, this article sort of adjusted, just kind of like we're even talking about the voting. We haven't really had a holistic look, how does it hang together? There's language in the bylaw about the Finance Committee role that's very broad and very general. And then you go to the section on the Finance Committee and it narrows in, well, what applies? And so I think that in looking at this, you know, we're really sort of saying it's time to kind of take a more comprehensive look and also get input from our community around what things people want to see going forward. So I think basically it's about a time to take a fresh look. We're not alone in this. Sharon recently completed a bylaw review process. Natick has done one in the past couple of years. A number of other cities and towns have been engaged in this. And we do request an appropriation. We picked a number. It might not be the right one, but it's probably will get us through at least the first year of the work because we will need a consultant to work on this with us. There's two groups out there that do a lot of this work, the Collins Center at UMass Boston and Mass Municipal Association, Metropolitan Planning Council. They do this kind of work. So I think we'll want to get the committee, not me, but the town will want to get that kind of expert guidance from people who have done this work with other cities and towns because it's, it's a big job. So that's kind of where we stand and what we're looking for support. And I do want to acknowledge, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Duddy, also Jen Chameleon, and I think really got some helpful feedback from them as well as we think about how this goes forward.
Mr. Chairman, through to the chair. So if I heard you correctly, have you been working on your motions that you're going to be adding to this?
It, it's coming up on our agenda. I think it might even be tomorrow night, if not tomorrow night, the next night.
And you'll give it to us so we can give it to public, is aware of what's going on?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah. Yeah, and, and any motions will be in the warrant that goes out to the public.
Right, okay.
So, so there, there shouldn't be any surprises. And I assume in the past couple of years, the moderator has done an open session ahead of time to review all the articles and, and sort of motions. You know, I can't speak for the moderator, but certainly that would be another opportunity for us to educate the public.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just offering, so.
So, so Ms. Thomas, are you okay if we defer this until we see the?
Sure. However you want, yeah, yeah.
If that's okay?
Yeah, however you want to handle it.
Is that all right? Yes.
Absolutely. Good idea.
Okay, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
And if you have any other questions, please feel free. You know, I think we're not.
That's a good one.
You know, we're really looking to sort of say, town government has changed a lot. You know, our town has grown, the complexity of town government has increased. How do we make sure that our bylaws and our government structures are following along with that and really meet our needs?
I think we're in agreement that this is a good study, yeah.
Christine, thank you so much for the ten on PayPal. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. So Article twenty-six is an article to transfer Shepherd Pond, Bolivar Pond, Silk Mill and Messenger Pond land from the select board to the Conservation Commission. So it really belongs under the Conservation Commission, let them take care of it. And I don't think it should be under our control. Seems like a lot of people watching that screen tonight. If no questions, I make a motion that the select board support Article twenty-six as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Next, Article twenty-seven, this is an appropriation to increase the Conservation Land Fund. So, Mr. Scollins, can you just?
Sure. The Conservation Commission has a land fund. It's got approximately a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars in it. And it's common for Conservation Commissions to ask for anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars to contribute towards the fund. So the commission can do work that's not otherwise funded within the budget to maintain properties. And then in a rare case, to be able to act quickly maybe to, you know, acquire a property. Obviously, this isn't enough money to acquire a property, but, but that's one of the purposes that a land fund is for.
And these funds, like I, can be used for treatments of the ponds.
Yes.
Yeah, that's important, so.
Yeah, exactly.
And what is the appropriation going to be?
Seventy-five hundred.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So I make a motion, the select board approve Article twenty-seven as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Article twenty-eight, Mr. Heinz, I apologize. I should have brought you up earlier as well.
I, I can wait. That's fine. Thank you. Alan Heinz representing the Revere and Sun Heritage Trust with respect to Article twenty-eight. The purpose of this article was to leverage the district improvement financing plan to help supplement the funds we're raising to build a museum. I apologize that we are not ready to share with you tonight a motion that we have been working on. As you know, working within a diff is very legal, complex matters. We have had sought to get town councils' perspective and approval that what we're trying to accomplish was legal. We, we received confirmation of that this week. But unfortunately, our motion as we originally had proposed didn't meet the objectives of the town finance administrator. So, so we retooled and I met with him this morning to show him the proposed workings of a revised motion, motion that we would take. And I, I would characterize our revised motion as a win-win-win. It's going to be a win for the Revere and Sun because I think we will hopefully receive some financing from the district improvement plan. But it's also going to be a win for the municipal departments and the school department because under the way that the current diff is operating today, this municipal side and the, and the schools will not have access to the significant amount of funds that are available. And our motion will seek to ease up on that, to put some authority in the select board through the Finance Director to ease up on that. So we've submitted a revised motion to town council, hoping to get that approved. We'd like to vet it through the Finance Committee and then come back to this board and explain to you how this would all work. And hopefully, I'm not misspeaking and the town Finance Director is here, that, that I do think that, that our proposal will improve upon the, the process as it exists today. So, and really benefit the town in a, in a lot of ways, given the flexibility it needs to meet its financial goals. So, so hopefully we can come before you again and show you the details of that after vetting that through the Finance Committee. But at this point, we're, that's, that's about, until we get approval from town council that what we're trying to accomplish is legal, we didn't want to go too, too far.
Okay.
Any other questions? So I'm asking at this point, defer to, defer until we can bring the more details to this board.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Thanks, Alan.
Two minutes?
Yeah. Rockstar. Article twenty-nine, this is to remove the Facilities Department from the Department of Public Works. So, Mr. Duddy, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, sure. So we created a central maintenance division this year to focus on the town's buildings. It's, it's our largest asset and it, they definitely needed more attention. So we created central maintenance so that we could take a look at these buildings and, and really try to get them in proper condition, go back and look at the building study from two thousand and seventeen and start to act upon some of the recommendations that were made back then and certainly update that. And the, the goal was to get central maintenance to be its own department, with its own department head, and then staff it properly to take care of, with the town's, you know, largest asset. Part of that process, the first part of that process was to hire a central maintenance director, which we did for this fiscal year. The second step in this process would be to then make it its own department. So this article is seeking to do that. The reason why it has to be a town article is because at some point Canton voted through town meeting to have DPW absorb central maintenance, or it was known as building and grounds. So at one time, it was its own standalone department. So we're seeking to get it back to being its own standalone department.
Makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the select board support Article twenty-nine as written in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Next article is Article thirty-one. This is to accept Saddleback Lane and Horseshoe Lane as town ways. These roads are currently not accepted roads. They do not meet the criteria of an accepted road for the town of Canton, but there has been a request from some of the residents to accept this. So Charlie, do you want to talk at all about it or you don't have to?
No, sure, yeah. I, I actually spoke about this at the Finance Committee meeting last week. The residents of Saddleback and Horseshoe are seeking to get their roads accepted by the town. This, as you recall, was a forty B development. So it was built in accordance with the regulations for forty B at the time and the town approved the roadway and the property. So what this seeks to do is for the town, for town meeting to vote and accept this as a public way or a public road. And if that gets accepted as a public road, then the town is responsible, as it is for all public roads, to maintain it, plow it, fix the water pipes and so forth. There, you know, there's some, some question about, you know, does the road meet all the requirements of what we would require a subdivision road to be built today? It does not, but it, it did meet the requirements under forty B. So the question for the town meeting will be, do they want to accept the road? There are some factors that would impact that decision. There is a sewer pumping station that is on the road that pumps into the Randolph Sewer System that needs to be maintained. And there is an issue with the line of sight as you come out from Saddleback onto Randolph Street. So line of sight under regular subdivision regulations is required about three hundred and twenty-five feet in each direction. This is approximately two hundred and ninety feet, so it doesn't quite get there. And there's also a stormwater management retention pond on, on the property as well. So the town would, at some point, probably have to assume the responsibilities of maintaining at least the stormwater and the sewer pumping station should the HOA that currently maintains it today dissolve.
Do we have a price tag on that?
No.
No.
Mr. Chair, now, in watching the FinCom meeting on this, it's currently a private way, I believe.
Fact.
It's a private way in development. The road, I've been up there, the road was paved about four years ago. It's in excellent condition. The site view is a concern with the town and a subdivision, A-one subdivision put in today. I don't think they should be penalized with that. But the whole thing on the FinCom and their biggest concern was the sewer line maintenance and the pumping station and the pond. So those, the pumping station is a big issue. So maybe acceptance of the road without the pumping station and the pond, if that was in their opportunity, take care of that. I, I don't have a problem with the accepting the streets, seeing there's thirty-five homes there paying full value, full tax values of their properties. You know, do we plow that street as we?
We do.
Right now, so.
We plow when they have, but.
We plow it, yeah, so.
Yeah.
But those are the big issues that would have to be clarified and it wasn't clarified at the FinCom.
No.
And it takes care of what? And that was the, the biggest thing on FinCom, not taking a vote on it, was who's actually going to be responsible for them.
So there's language in the, the agreement that the HOA will take care of the sewer and water. But in that same agreement, if the town accepts this, the HOA can dissolve. So they're telling us like, hey, we're going to take care of it still, so accept this. But as soon as we accept it, they can dissolve and then the town is responsible.
And as Chip, I will say that in the FinCom meeting, Mr. Snyder's, who represents the residents there, when I brought that to his attention, he did indicate that the HOA would not be dissolving and would continue the maintenance. So I just think we need to clarify, maybe get some agreement
Yeah.
that, that the HOA will continue to maintain those facilities.
And the other question I had, have we accepted a private way in the past? As a road, public road?
We definitely have accepted them. I just, I'm not sure when the last one was. Was Colts Crossing a private way?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, I think they did.
They did better than charges as well.
So they did, right.
As, well, not, well, up off of Walpole Street, uphill, uphill, thank you.
Yeah, but this is, we're not looking, this, this is, this is an issue that could be happening in the future with the pumping station and all that. That's what we're concerned.
That's my concern.
Yeah. It's not so much a betterment, so.
No, but my concern is to fix, we've had a couple pumping stations, one on SD Way,
No, but my concern is to fix, we've had a couple pumping stations, one on SD Way, one on Oxbow Road, that were with the town.
Real quick, I just want to let everybody know Karen is trending in Massachusetts on Twitter right now. Fifty-four thousand posts about Karen. I don't think it's Karen Reed, but that is trending. I'm trying to look at some posts right now. I do see a few posts for Karen Reed. It's a lot of, a lot of posts starting to show up. Interesting.
Original of the Rosewood, with Rosewood, we had up on, up on 138 Windsor Woods. Those two were accepted, that put us over, we were caught between a rock and a hard place. We had 10%, I mean, right at the 10%. We had to get over 10% to, for no more 40Bs. Now, that put us to 13%. Right now, we're roughly at 12%, so we're still on the upper end. So there were 22 waivers on that street. The street's not, you know, not legally wide enough, and you know better than I, for two fire engines, it can't go up and come down at the same time. And I'm not, you know, town meeting ultimately make this decision, but that's a major concern of mine. And also, there's 88 roads, streets in this town that are unaccepted, 88 of them. That's a lot of roads. And if we open this, I know there's talk of putting a committee together, maybe bond something to address some of these towns, I mean, some of these streets, excuse me. And that's something that is gaining momentum because, you know, people say, well, how did this happen? Because you'd be surprised that streets are unaccepted. And the people, you know, your lawyer, your bank, your real estate agent, they should have, they should have, and the builder, the builder, you know, got the money and took off, let's be honest.
Got the money and took off.
Call it what it is. So I'm very concerned, there's 88 roads, and it's going to open the floodgate.
Brown finger.
Because it's upwards of several hundred thousand, at least $200,000. The last two on SD Way and Oxbow Road.
Got the money and took off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify that if you accept a road, you accept everything underneath it forever. So water and sewer is underneath it. Stormwater is underneath it, so there's no separating that out. You accept the road, you accept all the infrastructure and liability.
And just by law, roads that aren't accepted, the town can't spend more than $500 per fiscal year fixing something. I mean, if there's an emergency, we've done in the past. But we do plow it, we do sand it, and we do trash, pick up the trash. Because legally, we don't have to, but I, as I've always said, morally, I do. And we have a rule of thumb, anything more than two homes, God forbid, there's a fire, or there's a.
Fire.
Police emergency, we have to get the emergency folks up there to help, help the folks, so.
So.
Here crickets.
Lockman, do we put this on motion?
So, through you, Mr. Chair, so is, Mr. Schneider's coming back with language for this article, that the HOA is going to maintain the infrastructure underneath, or?
I think we should.
I have not spoken with Attorney Schneider since the, since we were at the FinCon meeting, so I am not sure what he.
So, so why don't we just take a position on this tonight to either support or not support it?
Okay. So I make a motion that the select board does not accept.
Not, no, I'm sorry, this is, this is a board decision. We're discussing how we stand on articles.
Articles.
That's what we're doing tonight, so it's not open for discussion. If you ever, if you have a question about this, you can certainly do this at town meeting.
Town meeting, make the ultimate decision, just so you know. Yeah.
It's Peter Griffin.
It's a lockman.
So I make a motion that the select board does not support Article 31 as written in the warrant.
Second. Most of you made it seconded. Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Five, zero. It's always five, zero. Article 32, 33, 34, and 35 are zoning articles, and we typically defer to the, sorry, and 36. So 32 through 36 are zoning articles.
Yep.
And I make a motion that the select board defer those articles to the planning board.
Second. Most of you made it seconded. Any other questions or comments on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Aye, Neil.
Finally, Mr. Chair, Article 37, this is the budget ball. So this is just to appropriate the funds to meet the expenses for next fiscal year. So I make a motion that the select board support Article 37 as written in the warrant.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any other questions or comments on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Next on the agenda.
All right, so now. All right, so we are postponing item number two, which was the.
Auto Gallery.
Canton Auto Gallery.
Yep.
So number three, I move that the board approve the application to obtain a special license to serve all alcoholic beverages and one-day entertainment at a one-day event for Patrice Wesner at the barn in the open space next to the barn at Paul Revere Heritage Site, Four Rolling Mill Way, on June 22, 2024, from 3:30 PM to 9:00 PM, contingent upon building commissioner, police chief, and fire chief approval.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Next, Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the application to obtain a special license to serve wine and malt beverages at a one-day event, a trivia night fundraiser to be held for the Friends of the Canton Public Library located at 786 Washington Street, Canton, on May 10, 2024, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM, contingent upon building commissioner, police chief, and fire chief approval.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Next, Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the application to obtain a special license to serve all alcohol at a one-day event, and application for a one-day entertainment for the Sharon Crowley Martin Memorial fundraiser to be held at Prowse Farm, 5 Blue Hill River Road, on May 4, 2024, from 4:30 PM to 10:30 PM, contingent upon building commissioner, police chief, and fire chief approval.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Next, I move that the board approve the application to obtain a special license to serve all alcohol at a one-day event, the St. Patrick's Dinner at St. Oscar Romero Parish, 700 Washington Street, on March 16, 2024, 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, contingent upon building commissioner, police chief, and fire chief approval.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
I move that the board approve the request to hold the Trillium Road Race to be held on May 11, 2024, at 9:00 AM, the allowance of alcohol at 10:00 AM, and allowance of entertainment for an MC, DJ, at 9:00 AM, both times outside of approved license permitting hours. So, and that is contingent on police approval.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
I move that the board approve the request to hold the Anthony Maffey Memorial Walk to be held on Sunday, June 2, 2024, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, subject to police approval.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you. Good luck. I move that the board approve the extension of municipal yard waste transfer site agreement to American Earth Products.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
I move that the board approve the request to hold the Little League Opening Day Parade on April 27, 2024.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any comments, questions?
The only comment, sorry, Mr. Chair, is it's a new route. Normally, we come out of the high school and take a left and take Washington Street to Denham, but we're now going down Revere and Sherman and Reynolds.
Oh, that way, backwards.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other, any other questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Marilyn, thank you for the 10, the 10 dollar donation. Thank you. Thank you. At the recommendation of the Human Resource Director and the town accountant, I move that the board approve the appointment of accounting specialist, accounts payable, Deanna O'Neil.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
At the recommendation of the Human Resource Director and the Operations Manager, I move that the board approve the appointment of heavy equipment operator for sewer, Yomar Risado.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
And this is a reappointment for the Cultural Council, which is about to expire and it's for a second term. I move that the board approve the appointment of member to the Canton Cultural Council, Patricia Cohen.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Five, zero.
Next, I move that the board accept and authorize the use of the gift in accordance with the terms thereof under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the donation of $25 in the memory of Ada Goodrich from the Women's Benevolent Union Congressional Church of Canton to the Parks and Recreation Department.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I move that the board accept and authorize the use of the gift in accordance with the terms thereof on the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the donation of $10,000 from Canton Copperworks LLC into the Conservation Land Fund.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I move that the board accept and authorize the use of the gift in accordance with the terms thereof on the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the donation of $100 from Lillian and Robert.
Junior.
Junior, to the Department of Elder and Human Services.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
I move that the board accept and authorize the use of the gift in accordance with the terms thereof on the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the donation of $1,500 in memory of Bob Diessio from the Diessio family to the Department of Elder and Human Services.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
What a great man he, Bob Diessio was.
Yeah. Swolly missed.
Absolutely.
I move that the board accept and authorize the use of the gift in accordance with the terms thereof on the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the following donations to the Beautification Committee for Cleanup Day, Trillium Brewing Company, $250, the Bank of Canton, $1,000, Hebrew Senior Life, $2,500, and SEM X2 Incorporated, $250.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Five, zero.
And this is part of the grant agreement for the billboard at 120 Cedar Street. I move that the board accept and authorize the use of the grant in accordance with the terms thereof on the Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the grant of $12,500 from Outfront Media for 120 Cedar Street.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
This is for a streetlight to be installed on pole 37, which is to the left of 400 Washington Street, and I believe this was a citizen.
A citizen, because there was a light up there. Yeah, this would be for one. I thought there was a couple of lights that went down in that area years ago that were never replaced, but I guess this would be the side of it, so.
Yeah.
TPW went up. Again, I thought there was two, but I can look into that.
I moved that the board, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I moved that the board use up to $2,000 from the billboard mitigation account to install a new streetlight on Washington Street.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Next, Mr. Chair, the vendor warrant total for the week of 2/16/2024 is $1,876,587.56. The payroll warrant total for the week of 2/16/2024, $301,804.51. The vendor warrant total for the week of 2/23/24 is $1,431,212.84. The payroll warrant total for the week of 2/23/24, $1,584,335.17. The vendor warrant total for the week of March 1, 2024, $1,834,111.86. The payroll warrant total for the week of 3/1/24, $304,38.62. Next, Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the cemetery lot and perpetual care deed.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
Next, I move that the board approve the minutes from the select board meetings of February 20, 2024.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So in topics not anticipated, we have just two items. So, Mr. Duty, one of them is to approve the warrant. Do we need to hold off on that while we're waiting for the finance committee and Mr. Heinz to weigh in on their articles?
That's a good question. I would defer to town council on that.
It's time, it's the election, not town meeting.
This is the election.
Oh, the election, I apologize.
It's not about the warrant.
Sorry, I apologize.
You confused me.
Right, I saw the warrant, sorry. So at the request of the town clerk, I move that the board approve the warrant for the annual town election.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also, a topic not anticipated, the superintendent of Public Works is asking for authority to be the signatory to file a grant for the Canton-led service line inventory and replacement plan. So I make a motion to authorize the superintendent of Public Works to apply and sign for a grant for up to $280,000 for the Canton-led service line inventory and replacement plan.
Second.
Most of you made it seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, Mr. Chair, we have the town administrator update.
Duty?
Not, just one item tonight, Mr. Chair, for the board's information, the Human Resource Director for the town has scheduled supervisory training for departments for their assistants. So this would be for the next level below the department head. She's organized supervisory training that's going to take place over three weeks. There'll be, there'll be each Thursday for three weeks, where the assistants will go through a variety of topics that have to do with, you know, supervision of employees. So it's a, it's a progressive program that she, she's putting forward. It hasn't been done here in the past, so, you know, really grateful that she put that together, should, should do a lot of good for our assistants in helping them become better leaders and also improve succession planning, so kudos to her.
So, Joey, thank you.
Next, Mr. Chair, we have some clerk notes, so I'll defer to me. So a reminder that the Third Annual Canton Cleanup Day will be held on Saturday, April 6, from 10 to 12. The rain date will be Sunday, the 7th. People interested in volunteering should visit the website, keepcantonbeautiful.org. The Canton Library will be hosting a vibrant Persian New Year celebration on March 23 at 11:00 AM. All are welcome, but this event is tailored more towards children. Please visit the library for more details. The Canton Heritage Festival is coming soon to the Paul Revere Heritage Site. The date will be May 18, and more details will be coming soon. I suggest that you come and see Legally Blonde, the musical, at Canton High School this coming weekend. Tickets are still available for shows on Friday, Saturday night, and Sunday afternoon, but they are going fast. And just on behalf of the select board, congrats to all of our student athletes at CHS who[1677.76] made it into the playoffs, it was a great season for all of those teams. Next, Mr. Chair, the Select Board will hold its next meeting on Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM, in the Sala Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, eight oh one Washington Street.
That's it.
With that, public comments.
Next to the public comment section, again, I'm going to remind people that this is will be fifteen minutes total, with a firm three minutes per speaker, I would encourage those that do want to speak, be mindful of the others, starting with that, we'll go back and forth, we'll start on the left side of the room, if you could just identify yourself, please, and go from there.
That's my side, my side?
Yep.
Is my microphone on?
Should be.
Yeah.
Kathleen Howley, Canton resident, there was a gun threat last month at the Canton Middle School, instead of addressing it transparently and responsibly like Norwood did when it had hit its shooting threat at its middle school on Friday, the Canton Superintendent and the Canton Chief of Police covered it up. Parents received no details about the shooting threat in Canton that was averted only by chance, a parent happened to see it and reported. The only communication was a super vague email sent two hours after parents dropped their kids at school the next day, it was deliberately vague about a threat of violence, far more vague than other safety updates we get from the schools about medical emergencies or power outages, it did not use the word gun or weapon. I've seen the video, the student says he's locked and loaded, that he has cleaned his guns on Sunday, and that the next day, Monday, is a school day, he will see you all in hell. The wording reminded some parents, including myself, of the threat posed by Ethan Crumley the night before he went to school and killed four children. We have received zero information, including the type of gun, and whether the police searched the house for other guns. Recently, a Canton citizen wrote to Charlie Judy about the shooting threat, Charlie said it was the superintendent's responsibility and the police couldn't say anything, even though other towns, including Norwood, are able to update their citizens, minus the minor's name, of course. There you have three of the highest paid, the three highest paid employees in Canton, the superintendent, the police chief, and the town administrator, none of them feel urgency about communicating with parents about a threat of violence involving Canton children. It's been five weeks, you, the Select Board, are the police commissioners of our town, our police chief's contract says she works under the direct day-to-day supervision of the Select Board and the town administrator, you've said that you don't, you don't want to oversee the police chief, so you don't do it, imagine if any of us said that about our job, we don't like doing part of it, so we don't do that part. In Norwood, the police updated the entire town daily, and this Sunday night, they announced they arrested a twelve-year-old boy and charged him with threatening a mass shooting. The police also said they searched the boy's house for guns, and they didn't find any weapons at all, how reassuring for the parents of Norwood students, other towns can provide that information to residents, but not Canton. In Canton, we get zero information, importantly, the students got no information about the consequences of making such threats, hopefully, there were some, without consequences, there's no returns. Two middle schools, six miles apart, Canton swept the threat under the rug, that's not a way to ensure future safety. I suggest you step up and inform residents of the facts before asking us in May to approve fifty-six million for the school and more than six million to fund the police. We are at a dangerous moment, the Canton police are being investigated by the DOJ and the FBI, in a court hearing today, we learned the FBI has concluded definitively that the murdered police officer was not hit by a vehicle, in other words, Karen Reed's SUV did not hit him, according to the FBI, another black eye for our police. Any town leader who cannot act responsibly in this moment needs to step aside or be put on leave and let someone else perform their duties, especially when it comes to the safety of our children, thank you.
Good evening, I have a question for the board.
Identify yourself, please.
Jennifer O'Donnell, I have a question for the board.
No questions, it's not.
Is it obvious that you backed the wrong horse yet? I have purposely not brought up the Karen Reed case to the Select Board meetings outside of speaking in memory of John O'Keefe, and I want, I won't pretend to know what happened that awful night, however, what is very clear is it wasn't Karen Reed. I'm not sure if you have been following, but the last hearing, we all got to watch Chris walk in behind a woman who gladly used her body to entrap a journalist for reporting too effectively. A human shield, smiling smugly, feeling so smart, while it's backfiring, good smile, Chris has shown us how low he's willing to go. I believe the court was told she is family, Chris has taken to using people as collateral now, bending and twisting the laws and rules to his own needs. Chris Albert, you and the Commonwealth brought the circus to our town, you and your bad judgment call after bad judgment call are the reason so many keep showing up, it's that simple, you are the sideshow. You claim to be a scared witness, you're not scared, Chris, this is a game to you, don't know what happened that night, but we do know what's happened ever since, and you continue to abuse the seat that you sit in, and use your resource, our resources, as a town and a state for your personal protection, including using us as your human shield. You weren't scared when you singled me out at the courthouse, Chris, I stood in silence, exercising my First Amendment, holding this sign here, it's been the same sign that I've held ever since September. Would I be using, you asked me, as you cocked your little head, would you be using this as your school committee campaign? No, Chris, because until you singled me out, I was able to keep these two completely separate. I have this sign from the start, we have Meatball Morrissey and Corrupt Proctor, infamous solo cups in a killer playlist, nothing scary, nothing bullying, nothing about you, nothing about anyone else in this town, no mention of McAlberts. You have used trashy people in court as a shield, and you have used our town as a shield long enough, you and my, and the entire family and social circle are involved in this case to making, to involved to be making any sound judgments on behalf of our town, you should take the time to focus at home.
You should be embarrassed of yourself, embarrassed.
We're going to stop the clapping, we're going to get on to the next one, or we're going to stop this thing right now, say, next.
Going to shut down public comments? They don't want to hear it, that's the thing, they don't want to hear the truth.
Kristen Anderson, good evening. As members of the board, you work for me, a random citizen, one of my expectations is to conduct yourself in a professional manner, especially when out in public, you are representing this town, however, attending a high-profile murder case, swearing at bystanders, and making derogatory comments to other random citizens that are currently running for specific seats within the town, well, that is extremely inappropriate and unacceptable and should not be tolerated, no, I do not tolerate it, with that being said, what part of, dude, you gotta go, do you not understand? Thank you, have a good evening.
Over the past several weeks and months, we've been lectured on things like decency, integrity, transparency, accountability, and leadership with profanity-laced rhetoric by an individual running for a school committee position. I'll start by acknowledging that when Mrs. Schuman was here and read the letter in front of the board, it was obvious that it had its intended effect, she was upset and shaking, you don't have a heart if you didn't feel for her, the origin of the letter was never actually determined, but nobody questioned its impact on Miss Schuman, and I think we can all agree that nobody should ever be made to feel that way. That being said, about two months ago, I myself received a communication from the individual in the running for school committee reading the following, "Do you really want me to focus on you? Do you really want me to dig and find out your connection to the corruption? I've never done a thing to you," or, she names the citizen, who I have no personal affiliation with, "this is my only suggestion," and I said the same to this unnamed citizen, "pretend I don't exist," or "prepare," misspelled, "for me to fight back, I'm not fighting any one individual, I'm fighting to make a less toxic environment for all of our children, why are yours and private?" That's what I've been told, we have such great schools, who's paying for the private school? I haven't wasted my time looking into you, but maybe it's time. Unlike the letter Miss Schuman received, this message had a timestamp, date stamp, name, and photo attached, what I have to say to this person is go ahead and dig, whatever the hell that means, I can tell you what you'll find, you'll find me probably laughing at something inappropriate or making a comment on social media that's maybe unpopular in your circle, you know what that means? It means I have a personality, and that I'm flawed, just like you, just like every other person in this room and in town, everyone, and even though I'm nothing special, maybe you'll just ruin me forever, wouldn't that be wonderful? Good for you, but in the meantime, while you try and dredge up something damning that'll cripple my reputation, I encourage you to take your own advice and instead pretend I don't exist, don't talk about my kids anymore, ever, and don't threaten me, in fact, maybe rethink your entire approach on how you address people that think differently than you, especially if you're trying to secure their vote to help oversee the development of our children.
Thank you, thank you, sir, I am not going to allow any confrontation, I am not going to allow any confrontations in here, thank you.
Mark Grossman, Meadows Ave.
And this one, is this the last one?
Yep.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gross.
We're, just first of all, everyone's respectful when you speak, and you're not, you know, you're not the same, that was rude what you did there.
This way, this way.
So, I find it deplorable and utterly unfair for individuals who think they know the facts to issue a blanket denunciation of the town's police force, all of whom are decent, hard-working, respectful officers, to insinuate these officers are corrupt, officers that have grown up here, and have families here, would risk their pension, everything they've worked for in their career is insulting, I've grown up with numerous of them and know them and their families personally, and to question their character is wrong, we are fortunate to have a great police department. I just want to say to the people that are here, that are from out of town, I mean, there's really no, there's no, I feel like there's no place for these people that don't live in Canton here for one reason.
What?
Problems, they don't care for the better of the town, causing a mockery, and I think anyone that associates themselves, I mean, with them, I mean, these people, like, find a hobby, like, or go to your own town.
The problem is, the truth hurts.
Okay, that's it, that's it, enough, truth hurts.
That's why I didn't want to hear this.
Ask you to sit down, or do not make a comment.
We have people coming here, oh, my glasses, dressed up as a clown, I mean, it's ridiculous that, you know, I just feel like this is, we should be concentrated, there's enough going on in Canton, and we should focus on the issues, thank you.
He's a plant.
Motion to adjourn.
But that hasn't been fifteen minutes, it hasn't been fifteen minutes.
Three minutes apiece, we have a motion to adjourn.
There was still, there was still six minutes left.
Second.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Come on.
Second.
The buzzer only went, the buzzer went off twice, how is that possible?
Thank you. Unbelievable.
Five. Five. Just three more minutes. Five. It doesn't say five speakers, it says fifteen minutes, you guys not understand that? Don't think that people don't see what the hell's going on here.
Right, keep talking.
All them people, nigger, tell you're going to be shot in the head, you're ashamed of yourself, if you're getting on our business.
Oh, my God.
My gosh.
Why is the sound going off? Unbelievable.
Some of the rocks, so they gave up and sold it.
Wow, that's unbelievable, shutting down the public from public comment at a public forum, I mean, listen, these people, they don't want to hear the truth, and obviously, we heard the truth today in court, and people will continue to deny here that, you know, this has all been confirmed by the feds in Karen Reed's case, Karen Reed did not kill John O'Keefe, the evidence is factual, and it points that Karen Reed did not kill John O'Keefe, I mean, we heard that today. The thing that really sticks with me in all of this is this, there was an independent expert that came in, that was hired by the feds during this investigation to come back and recreate the scene, someone that has very high credentials, someone that has three PhDs in this area, did the experimentation, he did the reenactment, and came in the conclusion of that report, and I hope that we get to see this report at some time, that at the end, in the conclusion of his report, he said there is no way that the injuries to John O'Keefe were done by Karen Reed's SUV, and furthermore, there was no way that Karen's, Karen created the injuries to John O'Keefe via her SUV, that her SUV never struck John O'Keefe. So where is the default in all of this? Where does this all land? I can tell you where, thirty-four Fairview. And I don't know how the Commonwealth of Massachusetts continue to go on and push this case to trial, it'll be an absolute travesty, it's an embarrassment to the justice system, it's a violation of someone's rights, Karen Reed, it does not bring justice to John O'Keefe, and why they've been wasting your money, taxpayer money, to try to keep pushing Karen Reed to go to trial to be falsely accused of this murder, they could have been using that money to investigate what went on in thirty-four Fairview that night. And I have a problem, when a call is made at two twenty-two AM in the morning between two officers, and then the DA's, and then immediately right after that, at two twenty-seven, five minutes later, someone that was in that house Googles how long to die in cold, and then the instruction comes down from the DA, DA Morrissey, for those people to destroy their phones, if that's not, not more corruption than you've ever heard in your entire life, then I don't know what to tell you, and I don't know how all of these trolls can continue to go on and say that this is all made up by the defense, even Jennifer Coffindaffer today, her own people, the organization that she's been employed by, her peeps, her peeps out there even said, even put on the record that two twenty-seven happened, and exposed all of this other shit that's going on in this case. This case needs to be dismissed now, and it needs to be dismissed right now, this cannot go on anymore, Karen Reed is factually innocent, and what's happening is, this is all coming out now, and these people don't want to hear it, because they're all fucking part of it, they're all fucking part of it. So, my friends, I'll leave you with that thought tonight, I appreciate every single person here that came out tonight to watch the stream, watch the earlier courtroom stream over at Turtle Boy, had a fantastic day over there with Turtle Boy and the Glitterer, we got almost sixty-two hundred people watching that, and people need to know, more people need to know about the corruption here that's going on in Massachusetts, and it's pretty thick, and it's pretty sad. But I want to thank everybody, all the newcomers that have come into this channel, all the new people that have recently come over and subscribed, all the comments on the videos, the continued support, I will keep elevating this platform, and I'm so excited, I'm about a month away to getting into my own module working studio, and I cannot wait until I have live guests that come into the studio, and we will continue to talk about this case and continue to expose the corruption that's going on in Canton, because Karen Reed needs to be a free woman, and John O'Keefe needs justice. All right, my friends, I'll see you all soon, go over and head over and support Turtle Boy at nine PM, he needs your support, and thank you so much for being part of the LTL family, I'll see you all soon, bye.
Said it feels we're the only ones fighting for the truth of what happened to John O'Keefe, and me and my family and my attorneys and my team have marshaled every resource to get to the truth, it just feels like no one else wants it.
Karen, just to be clear, you didn't do it.
We know who did it, Steve, we know, and we know who spearheaded this cover-up, you all know.
Yes, we do.
And no, she didn't do it, no, she didn't do it, this is an innocent woman, she didn't do it.
I tried to save his life, I tried to save his life at six in the morning, I was covered in his, I was the only one trying to save his life.
Why do you admit to it?
He didn't, she didn't admit to it, she didn't admit to anything close to that, nothing close to that, and you should know that.
That was like three or four times.
No, she didn't.
No, that's not true.
She asked a question.
It makes absolutely no sense, that is the Commonwealth grasping at straws, if it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, it's a duck.
We have the eight letters, we've seen them, we've read them, we are using them, the genie cannot be put back in the bottle. We have the eight letters. We've seen them. We've read them. We are using them. The genie cannot be put back in the bottle.
Yeah, LTL True Crime. We going deep in the dark. Yeah, peeling back the layers, expose the hidden mark. From the streets to the alleys where the secrets lie. Getting into minds of the wicked, no alibi. LTL True Crime, unraveling the web of evil. No stone left unturned, we diving to the prime. Yeah, we digging up the dirt, bringing justice to the crime. LTL True Crime, revealing dark realities every time. Yeah, LTL True Crime, we going deep in the dark. Peeling back the layers, expose the hidden mark. From the streets to the alleys where the secrets lie. Getting into minds of the wicked, no alibi. Yeah, LTL True Crime, revealing dark realities every time. This is it. Yeah, LTL True Crime, revealing dark realities every time. Yeah, LTL True Crime, we going deep in the dark. Yeah, peeling back the layers, expose the hidden mark. From the streets to the alleys where the secrets lie. Getting into minds of the wicked, no alibi. LTL True Crime, we going deep in the dark. Peeling back the layers, expose the hidden mark. From the streets to the alleys where the secrets lie. Getting into minds of the wicked, no alibi. LTL True Crime, we going deep in the dark. Peeling back the layers, expose the hidden mark. From the streets to the alleys where the secrets lie. Getting into minds of the wicked.